And I'm trying to get the stream going here. It's been a little while, a little rusty.
And it looks like Josh is awaiting being promoted as well. He has his hand up and he's on the attendee list. There you are, Josh. We're just waiting for Jamie to arrive and then we'll begin.
Jamie will be joining us momentarily.
Sounds good. Thank you. There is Jamie now. With Jamie's arrival, good evening, Jamie. We're going to begin the meeting. We're just waiting for you to hop on.
Thank you. Little technical difficulties.
That's okay. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is a regular meeting of the South Kingston Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Joe Murphy.
Here.
Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Josh Daley.
Here.
Paul Jordan. Robin Poff, Robin Poffie.
Yeah.
Peter Di Stefano is absent and Maria Mack is here. Our second agenda item is the consent agenda. This consists of approval of minutes December 2nd, 2021, December 14, 2021. And request for extension of preliminary plan approval, major multi-household land development project, Hillside Commons, and the report of the administrative officer. Before somebody introduces a motion to approve, I just wanted to make a minor correction to the December 14th minute. So if we could pull that. On item D, which is subdivision and land development projects, public informational meeting, public hearing relating to Magnolia Lane. It incorrectly states at the end of the first paragraph, after the asterisk, applicant has requested that this hearing be continued to December, and it should actually say January. It does, however, say January at the next paragraph. So just wanted to make that clarification. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none when someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that motion with Paul Jordan.
We have a motion from Paul. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Susan. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Raise your hands probably so that it's clear.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is a public hearing. And just for those folks in the audience, we do have four public hearings this evening, which is rather a lot. Most of them have been continued upon request from the applicants for varied reasons. And generally, the board votes at 11 o'clock if a meeting goes beyond that, whether to continue the meeting or move it to a date certain. So let's continue with our first public hearing, which is public informational meeting, public hearing, major multi-household land development conceptual master plan, Magnolia Lane. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
We should have a few people in the audience for that.
And Jamie, you could promote the appropriate.
Okay, Dave Russo is coming in. I believe Bill Landry is also in. Mr. Degasino, if you'd like to join us as a panelist, please raise your hand up as well. That is all. We have Mr. Degasino, Mr. Russo, and Mr. Landry with us.
Who would like to begin?
I would, Madam Chair. It's William Landry representing Jay Thomas Investments, the applicant. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Landry.
Great, thank you. We're following up on a meeting last fall. The applicant has gone and refined the plan further. Dave Russo is going to explain more specifically the changes to the plan. I'd like to describe very generally what we're covering here and the key, the key points. The project initially, when it came out of TRC was approved, subject to a requirement that the hedge be enhanced and lengthened on the eastern boundary parcel to greater buffer area there. There was also some work done on separating the buildings further from each other and improving a parking area at a RC stage. When we pleaded to the master plan, public informational meeting, the first session, you know, there were a lot of, a little confusion, I think, on the, on the part of certain butters regarding some of the dimensional issues. We just want to clarify that. Right. First one was, you know, where we stand in terms of the allowed density on, on the property. We're dealing with 33,601 developable land, square feet of developable land area, which under the formula for the two households, multifamily housing would equate to 5.5 units on a 1.3 acre lot as opposed to the four that are being proposed. So we're considerably below allowable density on the property. We will show you tonight how we've gone well past what the TRC had, had recommended to additional buffering and screening on that eastern side, including some more bust landscaping and a fence being constructed there. We'll also show you a better image in of the building facade, the building elevation shown at the master plan. Because our focus was more on the site planning than on the architectural presentation, really understated the attractiveness of these buildings and the style of these buildings and how they compare very, very favorably to other new product being built in South Kingston along, along these lines. We'll probably give you a little better flavor for what people will actually be looking at the eye, you know, if they're able to see beyond the, the more robust screening that's been provided. I should mention that over on that east side where, where the real impact discussion has focused, the owner of the lot, most that lot ate there to the east. The owner of that lot is, has provided a letter of support for this application. You know, this applicant, like he always does, stays in very close touch with those who might genuinely be impacted by what he's doing. And, and there's a very favorable review of that by the, the person who would, who will be impacted most by the discussion we've had here. And I'll remind you that the development is significantly wooded to the west and to the south. To the north is obviously another development there that's recently been completed by the same applicant. We've considered other possible layouts. Dave Russo will address that a little bit. This one is, is the superior layout. A couple of waiver type discussion issues. The hundred foot front setback issue and the 10% open space issue. I'll address both of those separately. We really believe that a waiver is not even required on those two fact, on those two issues. But that if one were required, it should certainly be granted. The hundred foot setback seems to be a holdover provision in the subdivision regulations that has not been updated in view of the change in zoning a few years ago that, that changed all of the multifamily dimensional requirements in a way that was obviously and transparently designed to facilitate multifamily housing and a diversity of housing choices within the town. We're in an R10 zone here. The front setback is 25 feet for this use, not 100 feet, but 25 feet. And we're at 47 feet setback. That's the finding that the board has to make is that the zoning ordinance is complied with. The subdivision regulation, this is a zoning issue. It's a zoning setback. It's a setback issue that, that is controlled by zoning. If there's a conflict, but you know, we asked for a waiver anyway, just in case, an arguendo. But again, a waiver isn't required. And if it is, there's obviously, it's not a zoning waiver or variance. It's a much lesser standard. There is a hardship here, an unusual circumstance associated with the lot in that, you know, there's a drainage area to the rear of the property. And you can only push the development back so far. And it's actually pushed back to twice what the zoning setback really is. And I'll, you know, just remind the board something that I think it already knows. This, this isn't the first time someone has addressed the front setback issues in, in the development that's come along after the changes in the zoning dimensions for multifamily housing. The next item you've got on the agenda, the residences at Holly received a master plan approval for 12 units in six buildings on a lot that's the same size as this one that we're here on tonight, 1.3 acres. They've got 12 units in six buildings. We've got four units in two buildings. They asked for a hundred foot setback out of an abundance of caution. They only have a 25 foot setback. The board granted that waiver, even though, you know, it wasn't really required. You know, we've got twice the setback. And a third of the number of, of units. And I think, you know, I think that's pertinent. I'm not, I'm not critical of the board. They did the right thing. The board followed the zoning in that case. And both parcels, you know, it's, it's an appropriate setback for both of those parcels. An open space, you know, when a lot of people hear about open space, I know the board knows better, but a lot of the, you know, a lot of normal people think open space is some set aside area beyond the building area where people can, can enjoy recreation as some type of exclusive recreation area. For obvious reasons, multifamily units are a little bit different. The, the discussion, the definition of open space for this use, the multifamily includes private areas, backyard, side yards, front yards. And it, and it, it can be semi-private. These are condominiums. Everything outside of the footprint of the building is commonly owned by all of the owners and can be commonly used. There may be a limited common area for decks and so forth, but all of this land outside of the units and not even including the drainage area in the back is like 6,000 square feet, you know, many times more than the 10 foot, than the 10% requirement for open space. So there's more than ample open space to, to comply with the, the open space requirements many, many times over for this development. So those are the introductory points I'd like to make. And I'd like Dave Russo with the chair's permission to proceed now to just introduce himself as his credentials have already been presented at a prior meeting and, and to to address more precisely the issues that I've just described.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Yes, Mr. Russo, you can proceed. Please just state your name for the record.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is David Russo. I'm a professional engineer with Dupree Engineering and the project manager overseeing this project. So just to, before I begin, if Mr. Parker wouldn't mind putting on the, the landscape plan, that's really the more pertinent plan where we made a lot of changes to. So at the last time we were in front of the board, there was a lot of questions and comments. And one of the first items I'll, I'll address was there was questions on alternative layouts, reconfiguring the units. And we looked at doing various style of units, like breaking up the units a little bit with detached garages and like connected garages. And it just, it spreads the layout out a lot across the whole area. So it just creates bigger footprints. We also looked at doing an L shape. One of the concerns with doing the L was one of the units, we do have that drainage basin in the back. You know, one unit will end up with a drainage basin directly in the back. So you know, the drainage would have to be reconfigured to even get to that drainage pond by putting a unit and blocking off that pond area. And you know, that pond, you know, the, the whole design of the site, that pond was placed there as part of the hydrology analysis that we did for this. I wouldn't even say this site. I'd say this neighborhood. Because when we first started working on this project, we discovered that a lot of the town drainage system discharges to this wetland on the southwest and to one of the, it was just a low lying area to the north. So we spent countless hours working with the town engineer and also DM. There was multiple modifications on this permit to address all that the town's concerns with the existing drainage system. There was a lot of work with DM in terms of drainage system. And so a lot of time was spent on this, you know, the pond designs and the drainage design. So you know, looking at the alternatives and it, none of those really worked that, that well. So we think the layout that we have in terms of where the buildings are located are ideal for this property and the, the shape of the property. The buffer was part of the discussion. Last time we were here also, there was a comment about making the buffer less of a hedge line, making it more soft and natural feeling. So we had our landscape architect go back. She widened the buffer. It's approximately 12 feet wide now in the back. But what we did was she changed the planting scheme along that eastern stretch. And we also carried it all the way to the north and basically brought it up towards Magnolia Drive. And part of that decision came with one of the comments that we received from the board with concerns of the visual from Magnolia Lane. And we felt that by expanding that landscaping up to the front, it creates a good buffer around this development. You'll now have a an existing wooded area to the south, wooded area, wetlands to the west that can't be touched. And now you have a landscape buffer off the roadway and all along the eastern side where the development is. We've also proposed in addition to the landscape buffer, a privacy fence, like a white, you know, vinyl privacy fence that'll go along that property line. So not only does the, the applicant, you know, meet the landscape requirements within the, the regulations, we've also gone above and beyond and included a privacy fence. The applicant did submit some photos just to give a board the general idea of that area and the improvements that they're looking at. Just so you can visualize that area if you haven't seen it. The, they also submitted some examples of other similar style of units in the community, just to show that these are in the surrounding area. The setback issue that Mr. Landry discussed, I just want to add on to that, that we did look at. In part of the alternative analysis, look at rearranging units and what alternatives there are. And you know, with a hundred foot setback, it, it increases the driveway lengths, which increases the impervious area. And it also would require that pond to be pushed to the north side of the lot where that other pond is. So you'd ultimately have along the roadway, this, you know, large pond system with the, the units tucked way in the back. So really from a planning perspective, that's, that's not really ideal. And you know, some of that was expressed with a visual from Magnolia. I don't think that would help that concern. So, you know, we, we feel that that we've requested is reasonable and is within the intent of the regulations. The open space, Mr. Landry touched upon, so I won't really dive into that too, too much. That was, oh, the last item and last item was the applicant went back to his architect and the architectural footprints remain the same, but there was questions and comments about the, the visual look of them. I talked to Mr. Parker today and I, we, when we submitted those photographs, there was revised architectural plans that should have been submitted. The only change on the architectural plans was the facade on the buildings. The applicant went back to the architect and they, they changed the facade, understanding that there'll be the last page of the architectural shows the change. It's pretty simple to see. You can see they broke up that facade on the rear of the house to try to kind of break up the monotony of that, that backside of the house, which was a concern of the visual impact to the butters to the east. So our feeling is with the white privacy fence, the increased buffer with the increased plantings. You know, this facade update, we, we feel like we, you know, put our best foot forward to address some of the, look at alternatives and address the concerns that the board had last month or two months ago.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Are there any further members of your team that wish to speak tonight, Mr. Landry?
I have no further members. I do have just one question for Mr. Russo, if I may. Mr. Russo, you, you talked about the reasons why the buildings are closer to the road than 100 feet. And, and those included the practical issues associated with the lot and the good planning practices associated with not having 100 foot driveway there. If in fact a waiver were required of the 100 foot setback, is it your opinion to a reasonable degree of certainty that literal enforcement of that regulation is impractical, practicable and will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to this land in question? And, or that, and also, or that the waiver or modification is in the best interest of good planning practice or design? Is that true?
Yeah, as stated, you know, the, we believe that the waiver request, if granted, is really specific to the configuration of the lot, the drainage design that we had to implement on this site due to the challenges with the town drainage. So we feel it is, is, is good planning practice. And if we had to meet that 100 foot, it would create a hardship on the design of the site.
That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Before we get to questions and comments from board members, I guess I would like to hear from Amy with regard to the waiver. And then I have a couple of other things that I would like to be sure are clarified this evening.
This is Amy Owens, legal counsel. I think you could do. If the, the applicant has put forth the waiver request, and if you find that he's, they've satisfied the standard, you can certainly grant the waiver. Alternatively, or alternatively, you can find that the waiver request isn't required because it does appear that there is a conflict between the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations in this, on this specific point. And as you know, the zoning ordinance would take precedence over the subdivision regulations in an instance of a conflict.
So Amy, are you saying that because a waiver was requested, the planning board must act one way or another on that waiver? It does not mean that a waiver is not necessary?
You can simply grant the waiver request if you find it's justified. And if, if you prefer, you can find that a waiver is not required. And so you wouldn't need to grant the waiver request. We just need to amend the draft motion accordingly.
Thank you. Questions for Amy from board members on this particular issue? All right. As, as board members will remember, at the last time we discussed this particular project, it's unusual in that there are lots to the north that were developed without any planning board review. There is a history that I think Amy will be able to address. However, it's a little bit confusing because these lots continue in numerical order with the other lots in the previous subdivision, so to speak. So there has not been any inclusionary zoning trigger because this is meant to be a separate subdivision, but it's confusing because again, you have the numerical number of lots. And you have, thank you, Jay, and you have a separate lot from this particular portion that we're looking at this evening that shared with the northern lots as far as drainage is concerned. The other thing that would be important to address is Mr. Landry referred to this as a hardship. And I believe that the applicant knew full well the constraints of the site prior to developing this. So it's a little difficult to imagine that this is a hardship. And I don't know how many plan board members have been out to the site. I did go out to the site. I thought that it looked even smaller and more constrained than it does on paper. Particularly this area that we're looking at this evening. And it was noteworthy that in the northern lots, there is still a, although homes are being constructed, there is still a large amount of rubble and stone and material behind all of the lots in the narrow section just to the west of where the houses are. And I think it's important for board members to be assured that this particular stormwater structure is going to be adequate, not just the, the extra lot, but the site to the west. The fact that we are getting 100 year storms that The fact that we are getting 100 year storms that go beyond the definition of 100 year storm and the the general area, I think that we need to be assured that this is not going to be an issue going forward. What if this drainage structure is inundated and so on? I think that the board will probably have several questions. This has been of interest to folks in the area as well. We've had numerous letters in the past from abutting property owners. Joe, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, two questions. The first one is to Mr. Russo, and then the follow up to that question is to to Amy. But the last time we had a hearing, there was questions and concerns from neighboring property owners relative to the area of the of the lot, specifically the area that's suitable for development. So the first part to Mr. Russo, if you could explain to us what is included and what's excluded from the 33,600 square feet that I believe Mr. Landry just quoted. And then the follow up part to that was to Amy, where I think we had a question on whether the stormwater retention, which is a utility servicing house lots in the neighborhood outside of this specific site, whether that could or would not be included as land suitable development under Rhode Island. So Mr. Russo, if you could first explain what is and what is not included in land suitable for development?
So, thank you. The total area of the lot would, you take the total area and you take out the wetlands, which in this instance is the there's no buffer on this. It's just the flag edge of wetlands. So when you take the wetlands out of the total area, the actual, the number Mr. Landry said, I think he misspoke is, and it's on our plans and it's in the staff report is the 34201. And that, in that area is really just specific to the allowable density. So in this development, you need 15,000 for the first two units and 5,000 square feet for each dwelling unit after that. So for this development, the minimum requirement for four units would be 25,000 square feet. We didn't take, based on our read of the ordinance and the regulations, we didn't take out the easement area from that number or the pond area. If we were to take out the pond, like the pond area, we'd still be above that 25,000. If we were, even though I don't think you have to, if we were required to take out the easement area that we have shown there, it would probably still be close to that 25,000 number. I mean, we have the easement extending all the way to the east on there. But again, I didn't read anything in there in terms of easements and drainage. I can let Amy speak more to that, but that's how we came up with that value.
So based on, based on the area you have, it would allow a density of up to five units?
Yeah, that number five point change I don't have in front of me, but yeah, yes.
And and this may be a moot point now, Amy Owens, again, Joe, the subdivision regulations exclude from the, include from the definition of land unsuitable for development. Land within any publicly or privately held easement on which above ground utilities, including but not limited to electrical transmission lines are constructed. So I think you can certainly consider easement area for stormwater management purposes as land unsuitable for development. It certainly can't be developed if it's encumbered by an easement. But I think if they have sufficient area, even excluding that area, it may be a moot point.
Okay, so I appreciate that from both Mr. Russo and Amy. I guess the follow up to that, Mr. Russo, is that we would, if we're going to consider, and it sounds like we can consider that area unsuitable, the actual easement, if it's possible to redo the calculation so that we actually show in fact that the density still would allow four units?
Oh, we can certainly do that. I you know, the pond that we have on there too, there's our design pond. You know, we can go out there and just do a quick asbill of what was constructed to confirm that that's square footage.
I mean, I I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I would want confirmation. Personally, I would want confirmation to see that 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 density is allowed.
We can certainly add that to the the plans, assuming, you know, we still have to come back to this board, we're at master plan right now. So assuming we do get approved, we still have to come back for a preliminary review on this project and go through that process also. But as I stated, 25,000 is the minimum and we're pretty well above that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions. One for Mr. Landry. I think you said that the owner of Lot Eight is an abutter and either sent a letter or or corresponded somehow expressing support for this project. Is it possible to give us his name?
Yeah, I, it's a, it's a she, and I believe the, I can get that for you in a minute. It's in my notes. I believe that was forwarded to Mr. Parker several weeks ago. I got a copy of it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. D'Agostino's on the line as well. He may, without me having to go back, remember the lady's name.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, her name is Deb Harder.
Thank you. The other question I have is, I think for Dave Russo, only because Mr. Landry asked you a very specific question that included a term I always have difficulty with, the peculiar conditions of the lot. And I would, if you could explain to me what that means?
I mean, this particular lot has a wetland on it that receives town drainage system. So I mean, in terms of us having to handle this stormwater of this entire area was very peculiar. We worked with Rich Bourbonese a lot of hours on this drainage system out here. We were held to a threshold on this. It's not typically held. We weren't allowed to increase that that water in that wetland. We had to analyze it to show no increase in volume or flow and basically that, you know, we don't have any impact on it. So that's one peculiar aspect that I haven't dealt with on many projects in my career, dealing with that type of town drainage not going anywhere but on your side. Also, in addition to that, you know, we do have the two ponds over there. So from like planning, from a planning practice and an engineering design practice, you know, separating those two ponds, having two discharge points is something that, you know, was looked at. We spent a lot of time on that. So there's a lot of planning and thought that went into this layout. And I know it's been discussed that, you know, just because the pond's there, you know, you created your own hardship, but even if we were to redo this today, assuming that pond wasn't there, it's still best planning practice to put that pond where it is and discharge behind, south of the homes into the wetland versus having those houses tucked all the way to the south, to the south of two drainage ponds. So from a planning perspective in the lot and the the town drainage, there was a lot of peculiar things on this property that we had to deal with.
If I could just ask one more question. Amy, I think you know what I'm referring to. I, I know that that term has a particular meaning. You explained it to us before. When we're trying to understand hardships, is that, can you just explain to me what legally what's meant by that?
Um, the, the standard for the, for granting the waiver as literal enforcement of the regulations is impracticable and will exact undue hardship because of the peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question. I think in plain English is the developer can't adhere to the, to whatever the regulation is. Basically because of the conditions of the land would render it not entirely unsuitable for development, but the development would be impracticable. It would be too expensive. I, that's what I take undue hardship to mean. It would make the development financially infeasible. So again, that's the standard you need to find to grant the waiver in in thinking about Mr. Landry's argument regarding the setback being specified in the zoning ordinance as 25 feet. But then again, separately in the subdivision regs as 100 feet. I'm hard pressed to I'm hard pressed to reject his argument. I think if the zoning ordinance says that the setback is 25 feet, that's the setback. So I would suggest we, if the board is going to vote on this tonight, we do it subject to amended findings.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Josh?
So following up on what Mr. Russo was just talking about with the drainage and his work with Rich was sort of also following up from what you prefaced this with Maria about, you know, anticipating climate change and and living with water. I hope Rich, you could maybe speak to what the applicant, you know, Mr. Russo mentioned, you went through extensive process. As you look and think about climate change and this drainage sort of issue, what have you scrutinized here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, just generally, generally about this project, I guess, just to speak generally about the progression here is, you know, originally this site has, well, this site, the way it's shown has always been included as part of one big project, which also had all these other lots that are within this development in this area. Those were all existing lots. This lot is an existing lot. But what, what, what David's getting at is that there are, there are really three discharges from town roads that lead to these, these properties. Now, none of these discharges actually, actually end, end, have an end, end wall on any of these properties. They're actually on a budding properties, but the, but the volume of water and the flow of water comes from Cleveland Street and Oak, Oak to these three different separate depressions behind these properties. They were installed as part of the original road system. They would have been a part of the original subdivision. It's not something the town went in and threw in some lines and just did all that. You know, so they were existing depressions that were being fed by town systems that were ultimately given to the town, developed privately, most likely, I can't tell you exactly, but developed by privately. The discharges were always there, so the volume of water has always been there. So when this project came to my desk, I saw that that some of the the design was causing an increase in the level of the, the elevation of the water in in larger storms. And in this case, we sized, I asked for sizing and and David is going to size, is normally sized for DEM purposes for 100 year on flow, but not normally volume, but we usually, the town is usually concerned about volume. So I noticed that the elevation in some of these depressions, all three of them or two of them that were really focused on the one towards the north, and then this one that's right next to here was going up. And it wasn't appreciable. It was, you know, a quarter foot. It wasn't, it wasn't a whole lot, but the problem I had with it was that that depression expanded over many different lots. So that that elevation change was happening over a bunch of abutters. So what I asked and what David worked towards, and it went back and forth, and David's right, we went back and forth, I mean, 10 times on this. But what I asked for was that there was no increase in volume or flow for 100 year storm. Okay, and that's what they've met. That plan, again, that plan did include effectively the buildings as you've shown. In fact, I think they might be a little smaller than the original approval or the original proposal. The same pavement surfaces, everything was the same. So what's designed here has been accounted for in these ponds that they're showing and provide storage volume so that there is zero increase in, there is zero increase in flow or volume post development. Now, as far as 100, 100 year storm being different than it is yesterday, I don't, I understand that storms are getting, they seem to be getting worse. But all we can do is base our information and, and the way we write our regulations is, you know, in this, in this case, what DEM is telling us as far as the volume, the amount of rainfall we use that falls in a 24 hour period on a type three storm and, you know, those types of things, those are what we look at when we size these systems. Now, this is sized for 100 year storm. Again, volume and flow. DEM doesn't care about volume. They care about flow. They don't want you to increase flow. Instead, effectively, I believe, I believe relates more to standard, whatever, channel protection, something like that. But, but, but in town here, we're always concerned about, about volume. So when, I, I think that David is correct that, I know David and I disagree on on where the water is coming from. He believes they shouldn't have to deal with it and they can just fill it and then, and, and that's not the case from the town's point of view. But we did ask David to do what I believe, and I do it for everybody. It's not just, it's not just this project, but we don't want to see any increase in volume. So they've met that standard. I don't know if that explains what you're asking.
Rich, could I just ask to follow up? The infamous flooding that we all experienced in 2010, which was two consecutive 50 year storms. How would this type of structure manage that scenario?
Well, I don't know what happened here in, all I can tell you, Maria, is that I, I don't know what happened in these, in these depressions in that storm. I got to imagine that there, that, that there were people with problems in these areas. But what I can tell you is that, that, you know, that the 10 year, the 10, you know, 12 years ago now was loosely considered a 100 year storm. It was actually a longer period than I believe in. And David, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was, I think I believe it was a longer period than a 24 hour period. We may not even classify it, but it was a lot of rain in a very short period of time. And I would say that we just had a storm, by the way, that was terrible. And if you look at some of the, the elevations on some of the streams around here, it was almost similar, and that was only six and a half inches. But either way, this is designed designed for 100 year storm. So technically, there, there should be no different effect on these abutting properties. Based on the design, there should be no adverse effect on these abutting properties with what's been proposed here. I mean, that's just, that's the way the numbers show it. That's, that's all I can rely on.
Thanks, Rich. Susan, you had your hand up?
I do, and I was going to ask a question completely unrelated, but I don't want to get off of stormwater yet. But I do have a question, and I assume it's for, for Rich. At the site right now, there are, there's some kind of drainage structure with pipes and manhole covers. Can you explain what that is and who owns that and how that's going to be changed and, you know?
With the pipes, whereabouts, whereabouts are we talking about?
Right through the middle of the site, it appears to be a number of sort of raised manhole covers, a drainage pipe coming in off Michaela Way.
There, well, there's a pipe there. The, the cul-de-sac area is, is sheet flowing over to a swale that runs, if you're going down Magnolia to the right hand side, there's a swell along that edge. And that discharges, it goes under Magnolia, and then it goes over to a head wall. And that pond in the, where does it go? You know what, David, maybe you should explain what's happening with that.
So there, there's a swell on the east side of the road that conveys that water. See, at the entrance road, you come in, that water is all conveyed down to a depression just north of the, the units we're discussing tonight. That stormwater is conveyed down to the basin to the south. Then there's another swell on the, the stretch of road that goes up to the cul-de-sac. There's a swell on the eastern side of that road. And then there's a culvert that goes under that road to the detention pond. You see just north of our units. So it breaks up the flow from the road. The detention basin that is on the very north end of the development, that is the, there was an existing depression there that town drainage was, the town drainage discharged out right behind those existing homes. There was a concern, and we recognized it from photographs and field inspections, that area was flooding. So with, with storms and we, we did our entire analysis in that area to, we actually tried to improve it by creating more storage up in that area for the existing town drainage system. So those are the three drainage ponds that we have and how the waters conveyed to them.
So and Susan, other, something else, there are the catch basins out there, are other covers, manholes that are also sanitary. They may all be a little elevated in the road because the surface course hasn't been put down. And there are a couple of head walls, inlets and outlets that will, I think the ones, if you're driving into Magnolia, running on the left hand side, there's one, and there's one on the right hand side. Those will generally be exposed. Those will generally be exposed because they're right off the side of the road. They're not going to be, they're, they're to allow for surface runoff into the, into the systems. The depression all the way at the end of the cul-de-sac, that was made deeper. You'll notice that it is much deeper than some of the adjacent areas even to the north. And that was because some of the areas here, they were filling. They had to, you know, reallocate that volume storage within these properties, and that's why that pond ended up so deep. And it'll serve as flood storage over time.
Thank you, Rich. I think, I wish I had taken a photograph. If you drive down Magnolia Lane, come down Magnolia Lane from Oak Street, and just as you make the bend in the road, if you look to your left.
Yeah, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, I understand the point you're making exactly. Andy, can you go to sheet six? So Susan, you see just below the L and Lot 7?
Yes.
After that, that's that structure that you see.
Yes.
Drainage structure. That will be in the edge of pavement associated with the drive to the, to the unit. You will not see that. It appears to be super elevated right now.
Yes.
That becomes a structure contained within the pavement.
It's a, it's a fill area. So right now, the existing elevation is lower than the final elevation. So when, when this area gets built out, they'll bring that elevation up to the top of that structure.
Right, right.
But then are there manholes?
Solid black line just in front of that basin.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a contour showing that the grade is going to be elevated in that area.
But if I look past that original structure we just talked about, do I not see like sort of elevated manhole covers in the middle of the site?
You might, you might. The, the site hasn't been filled yet, a little bit higher.
There's also a sewer connection. So it's, you might be seeing the sewer and the water. I mean, drainage, excuse me.
Again, those are not intended to be exposed. They will be either at grade in a lawn area or they will be within the pavement structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Russo, do you have a sense of the, and I realize we're not at preliminary, the amount of fill that is going to be required given the site constraints?
I don't have a quantity in terms of cubic yardage, but I can just, I can speak to it because we do have a grading plan. So, you know, you have the wetland in the back, which is a, you know, low-lying wetland. I'll kind of work from the west to the east. You have the low-lying wetland to the west. There's a small, there's plantings over there that DM required, and then there's a small riprap retaining wall that'll slope up. That elevation along the wetland area is about elevation 32. The first set of units on the left, the existing elevation is about elevation 33, give or take. We're bringing that grade up to about 38 to 40 in that whole, so that whole area in between the two units is about elevation 38 to 40. The existing elevation is between 34 and 36. And then as you go to the east, that starts to tie back into the existing grade, which is 40 on the east. So all the way to the west, you have 32, and all the way to the east, you have elevation 40. So to try to balance the site with the drainage and the development itself, we got to fill that middle section to kind of pick it all up a little bit.
And you show with your cursor where the riprap will be, and will that be exposed riprap, or will that be planted in some fashion?
We were just doing, you can see it right between the trees and the western units. You can see that hatch right there. Yeah, that's it. That's a, there'll be an exposed, small riprap wall. It'd be like, you know, three, four feet, depending on where you are, changes as you go.
Thank you. Other questions? Any other questions, comments from board members at this point? Oh, Susan, you have your hand up again.
I do. Thank you. I have a question about an item on the plans that I'd like some clarification. Would you be able to bring up the driveway area again in a photograph or in a sketch?
Is, is that, is that what you had in mind, Susan?
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you. In, on the top of that, just to the right of the words Lot 7, those look like parking areas on the side of the driveway. And maybe staff can clarify this for me, but it's my understanding that in the front yard setback, which may or may not be 100 feet, it has a prohibition, prohibition on buildings, parking lots, or other utility areas. Is this four car space essentially a parking lot in our 100 foot setback that would be prohibited?
Yes, this is Jay Parker. I, I'm sorry, I'm putting my camera on. That is something I think that could be considered. I believe that those were overflow spaces that the applicant was providing in case the board was not satisfied with the layout that they had. I believe that's, there's one space in the garage and one space in front of the garage. And I believe that was, those additional spaces were put in as additional spaces to try to alleviate any concerns the board may have for that. But specifically, I believe, yes, that is a requirement in the subracks.
That those not be there?
Correct. I'd like to go back and just confirm. I've got about 27 windows open, and I don't want to disrupt the discussion. So I'm just going to pause this real quick.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay. While we're waiting for a response from Jay, any additional comments at this point?
Yes.
Go ahead, Paul.
I, we haven't talked about open space. I'm just curious, in the, in the project review memo from staff, the, the section on open spaces is highlighted in yellow. Is that an upcoming discussion? Where are we with that?
That was something I had highlighted, and I honestly, I meant to address it before it went out, but with the number of documents we were trying to get out last week, it went out as it was highlighted in yellow. It was simply just a, a, a notice for myself that the open space was not requested in the form of a waiver, and it also was not shown on the plans. So I, I meant it to be a catch for a discussion item with the applicant, but unfortunately didn't get a chance to do so. But I think Mr. Landry explained that earlier. And yes, not back to Susan's question, but it does prohibit parking and other things within the front yard setback. Our subdivision regulation, regulations state that. However, in requesting the waiver from that, I leave it up to Amy as to whether or not their request needs to be specific to include the parking as well as the setback, the 100 foot relief, or if it can be considered one and the same. So the applicant has requested a waiver from the open space requirement. In that open space requirement, it provides the 100 foot setback dimension as well as prohibition of parking lots in that area. So I guess my question to Amy is, is there for a waiver inclusive of both of those items?
I think if the request was generally for the open space requirements, the planning board can find, and I would recommend you find that a waiver with regard to the 100 foot setback is not required because the zoning ordinance sets forth a different lesser setback. But with regard to the parking in that area, you can evaluate that request under the appropriate standard. So I think it's been, the request has been made properly.
Thank you, Amy. Robin, did you raise your hand?
Yes, thank you. So I would, I would have more questions about exactly where the open space is and what is being counted and not counted in that calculation. So Mr. Landry quoted 6,000 square feet, and is it, can we see that on a map where that is?
I think I can defer to Dave on that, on that question. I, what I meant to say is that everything outside of the buildings is, is open space. The, the open space required, including, including the roads, including, not, well, including the driveway, everything's open space. There's no definition of, of open space other than that the ordinance clarifies that it can include private and semi-private areas. And what we want to stress here is that this is a condominium. Everything outside of the footprint of the building is owned by all four owners and can be utilized by all four owners. And if I understand the calculations correctly, you know, it, first of all, there's a 25% lot coverage limit that these buildings comply with, which means it's 75% of this lot or, or somewhere around an acre is, is open space under the definition that's provided in the, in the subdivision regulations. So I think what Mr. Russo had advised is that even if you took the, the drainage management out of that calculation, there's still, you know, there's probably still about 6,000 square feet of, of open space. But I'll, I'll leave it to him to state the, the correct calculation.
Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, I, I think historically, the planning board has interpreted that section of the regulation to ask the developer to show an area that fulfills that obligation. I think what Mr. Landry is saying, but I think it would be hard pressed if someone put a grill and lawn chairs behind the unit they don't occupy and claim that as theirs because it's shared commonly to potentially create an issue. So clarifying that there is adequate open space within the development area may resolve a problem long-term with regards to management of any HOA agreement that Mr. Landry would put forward for review by the administrative officer.
Thanks, Jamie. I agree that there's.
Typically, a condo has, in that condo agreement, someone has the ability to control the area immediately adjacent to the entrance and rear of their building, whether it be a landscape or, you know, grill utilization area versus my neighbor can take over my neighbor's land because it's all commonly held. Again, you, it very common, you'll see that comment on Holly, which Mr. Landry, I don't think exactly appropriately used as an apples to apples example this evening. But in Holly Street, you staff has suggested and the applicant previously provided an area dedicated and identified as open space, and they are submitting revised plans that solidifies the representation of that required.
Thanks, Jamie. I think it would be useful to see on a map. Sometimes applicants will show an area and as green to show the demarcation of the open space. It seems as though it's difficult to envision this, particularly since this, the cumulative impact of really the whole project, if you think about all the lots, because this is one of several, is one that does not give the impression of very much open space. And if duplexes and multifamily type developments aren't developed the same level of what we think of as good planning with everything that goes along with it, then we need to really look at things very carefully.
I can expand upon the, just to Mr. Landry and the open space, the requirement, the multi-household, does the 10% of developable land? So going back, I mean, that's developable land. Using the full area of the lot, not just the developable, use the full area, there's 56,151 square feet. So the requirement would be 5,615 square feet for open space. We, we didn't draw it, like, we can do that, assuming we get approval and preliminary plans, we have to come back. We can denote it on the plans, but around the units, not including the pond area, just around the unit area, in just the green space, not including the landscape or the wetland area, there's over 6,000 square feet. Again, the 10% I'm using is the full lot area. The ordinance only requires the developable land of 10%. So really, the requirement is probably closer to that 34, 3,420 square feet, which is the suitable area. So it's, you know, we can show it on the plan, but there's sufficient space to meet that 10% requirement.
I just want to supplement that. I, I, I think Mr. Rabbit was accurate in saying that a lot of this depends on how you construct the homeowner documents. I believe what I said initially was that the limited common area is typically the decks and so forth. There, there will be a limited common area immediately associated with the units. But we would welcome a condition in the, in the master plan approval so that it's tracked that the homeowner documents have to legally match up with, with the, with the at least 10% of developable land area that's available and accessible by every, by everyone. I mean, I will note that the definition of open space in the subdivision regulation says it can be devoted to either private open space, such as private rear yards. I mean, that, the definition would say that that area that's private can count as open space. We didn't draft the definition, but I, I hear what you're saying. And we could construct a homeowner's document that really does exclude exclusive common area to one unit as being counted as open space. It seems like a fair thing to ask for. Even though the regulation says something different and more favorable to our position.
Robin?
Could I direct this question maybe to Mr. Rabbit? Is it customary that the driveway or the street is counted as open space? You're muted, Jamie.
You can read my lips. No, typically, to Amy's point earlier, things that are common in public infrastructure that you can't utilize or recreate on are typically not counted as open space. So a parking space that is dedicated for purposes of parking a car should not be in that open space calculation as well as any traveled way. Again, I think Mr. Landry is attempting to clarify. Originally, he said, any space outside the footprint is open space. And to your point, Robin, I don't think that would include the driveway, the turnaround areas, the parking spaces, things utilized for storm drainage, you know, a detention basin could be characterized as open space, but then it isn't necessarily open for recreational purposes. You wouldn't want children playing in the basin, although that could be attractive. So, you know, I, I still see a couple of things that, there's discussion that the calculation, we kind of know what it is, but we don't have hard numbers. We know we can provide the open space, but we don't have a hard number to show you. So to me, there are a few perhaps I's to dot and T's to cross. And again, the density calculation, the open space will solidify what they have for density. And really that, you know, putting the math together supports Mr. Landry's position tonight.
Thanks, Jamie. Do you have further questions, Robin?
No, thank you.
Susan, you had your hand up?
I did. Thank you. I'm changing the topic again. I, in my packet, I didn't find wetland permitting. And I see a notation in here that you have the permit, but you won't show it to us till preliminary. Is that the case? And is it something that we can see now?
This whole project has a DM permit. It needs a renewal, which is in process with DM currently. So DM will just basically issue a renewal, which will extend the, the prior application for a two-year period.
It says in my notes here that it has been renewed, that you have indicated to staff that it has been renewed.
The application's admitted for it to be renewed. DM is in process. The application's admitted for it to be renewed. DM is in process of that. It's, DM has a lot of applications on their list right now. So we can follow up with them. That's something we will have to have for preliminary as part of the package. So it's required. So we'll have it before then.
Okay, thanks.
Susan, this is Amy. Wetlands permitting, any, that's all considered public record according to the DEM's public records guidelines.
That's all, Maria. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Any additional questions at this point from board members? This is a public hearing. I do see a member of the public with his hand up. Actually, there are two now. The first one is Alex Petrucci.
Alex, you should be all set to speak if you want to unmute.
You're still muted.
Okay. All right, Alex, I'm going to, we're going to come back to you. I'm going to lower your hand. If you'd like to talk, please raise your hand again.
We have Raymond and Barbara Lima.
Hello?
Yes, good evening. This is Barbara Lima at 70 Oak Street. And I'd like to address a few of the things that were raised today. For example, the owner of Lot 8 has provided a letter of support. The owner of Lot 8 does not live in that building because it is currently being built by Mr. D'Agostino. So there is a little conflict there that you probably should be aware of. Just wanted to let you know that. And as for the DEM, I've been in touch with the DEM today. The file has been pulled and they'll get me an answer tomorrow about the status of, of that permit. Also, I'd like to really thank Chair, Chairperson Mack and also Mr. Murphy for raising the questions about the size of the lot because it's a real, real problem. And Jay, Mr. Parker, would you mind putting up that sheet that shows where the, where that lovely basin is, you know, that, that little part of the, of the site plan? Because I want to go over those numbers yet again. I know I went over them with you in September, but, and I think we're getting closer to having agreement about that. Not that one, the one that has a more close-up of the, I'm sorry, Jay.
It's okay. No, not either. Okay. Is that it?
Yes, that's it. Okay. So let's go over the numbers again. It's 1.3 acres, which is 56,1,092 feet, and that includes the whole thing. And by the way, Mr. Landry, the whole thing is 1.3 acres. So you have to take out, you can't compare it to Holly, the residents on Holly, because they don't have a wetland that takes up almost half of the lot. So 56,192 minus 22,591 for the wetland area over there leaves you with 33,601. That 33,601 square foot includes that lovely little drainage pond at the bottom, which, as you can see, takes up at least a third of that area, if not more. So you're left with about 22,000 square feet, which is about half an acre. And that's why Chairperson Mack, and that's why Mr. Murphy, it looks constricted. It is constricted. A half an acre for two buildings with four units, with four garages, with now six extra overflow parking, a driveway. It's that the numbers just don't work. He doesn't have that space, does not have that space. If you look at the lot two up above, which we did look at this in September, it's about the same buildable area. And there's, there are these questions about what is density? And what is, what was the other word that was used? The suitable area. Then there's what you can really build on. And it's what you can really build on that you have to look at because that's where you see your open space or lack of open space. So there were just, we really, I appreciate very much that the board is, is drilling down, going to look at it. It's not a big area that really, the project is far too large for what he has left there, which is a half an acre, half an acre roughly. And so in closing, I'm going to repeat what you all have said so brilliantly. The bottom line here is the applicant took a known DEM wetlands area, was told he had to, to take care of the water issues and mitigation features in order to build on the land. And now he's saying these same essential features make it impossible to meet the building requirements without a waiver. And the waiver request just isn't reasonable. First of all, they don't even know how, they're not being forthright about how much land they have to put these large buildings on. And so please do not let this thing go forward without having them account for some of the other issues that have been raised this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, I can't see the screen with the
Yes, next, uh, next. Next person with their hand raised is Mr. Jim Vasquez. So Vasquez, if you'd like to unmute. I think I just muted you by accident. I'm sorry. Try that again, Mr. Vasquez. There you go.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jim Vasquez. I live at 63 Hope Street, directly across the street from the opening to the development. Usually I talk about the roads. I'm not going to talk about the roads today. And who owns the roads? I think I'll wait until they're dedicated or want to be dedicated to the town. And then I will make a presentation to the town about the dedication of the roads. Anyways, I have a question because there was somebody else on the street. I don't think they're on the meeting tonight. They brought up a point about if it goes through as we just saw on the plans. What happens if that area in the back where the pond is, that's on the south side? What happens if that ever gets clogged up? How do they access that to unclog it? If the drainage that goes to it, you know, an animal or something else gets in there on the very south part, how do they get to there?
I don't follow the question. Are you, are you asking if the drainage pipe that comes from the roadway down to the southern pond, if there's a clog in that drainage pond? Is that your concern?
Yes.
If there's a clog in that system, they, there's manholes that are out there and they could flush the system out.
But what if the, what if the clog is down by the pond? Oh, you know, where it directly goes into that pond here. And will it still get there through the manhole covers? Is that what you're saying? Through the manhole?
I mean, that's typical of any drainage system. You know, you're kind of making assumptions on stuff that could happen. I mean, yeah, there, there could be a clog in the pipe. I mean, it could happen on a drainage system. They would have to maintain it. The homeowners association would, would have to take care of it. That's any drainage system, anything like that could happen. It, that comes with proper maintenance.
So it could, is that something that is written into the homeowners association? As far as a maintaining of these, all the drainage ponds that are on the, these two, these two developments?
All the, all the drainage out here, the DEM requires a, what's called an operation and maintenance manual. That manual outlines all the maintenance requirements of the, the stormwater system. So it is, it's all outlined in the manual. DM reviews that manual. It's part of the approval process. And it, it carries with the homeowners association for those maintenance responsibilities.
Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, would it be possible if we had the public ask their questions or state their comments, and then the appropriate individuals can respond on either staff's side or the applicant's side versus the discussion? It's hard to keep the record when writing the meeting minutes of a member of the public speaking and then someone just responds.
Yes, that's what I thought we were actually doing. I believe Mr. Russo was responding to Mr. Vasquez's question. But obviously you'll sometimes have a follow-up if that answer is not understandable or not sufficient. So I think that's what we have going on here. But it would be useful for when responding, just restate your name, Mr. Russo, as you do so. Mr. Vasquez, do you have additional questions?
No questions, just a comment. I will be commenting on the next thing on your agenda as well, but I just want to say that I do appreciate the board and all your hard work. I know you are, you're not elected, you've been appointed. And I would just hope that as citizens and townspeople here, that you would just represent the people and, and think of the people that are living in this area and not just the, the developers of the area. I've, I've been watching a lot of the planning board meetings. And some of the, some of the things that are said, it, it just has me scratching my head sometimes because I, 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 there's probably not a lot of other people on this call. I, I don't know how many are on the call or on the Zoom meeting. When we got together back in September, we had a full house at the town hall. There are a lot of people that were concerned about this development. A lot of people didn't speak that wanted to speak. But we, we, you know, I, I'm just concerned that you guys sometimes just seem to pass over regulations, you know, just if they, if there's something that's written says 100-foot waiver, I mean, 100 feet needs to be, what's, what's the word? A 100-foot setback? And then they just ask for a waiver. It just seems like, okay, we'll just give them the waiver, no matter what, what they're asking. And I, I just don't know why that is good town politics or a good thing to do for the town and the people that live in that area, just saying, oh, okay, well, it looks good to us. And so I just asked that you would just continue to represent us as citizens. And I do appreciate the work that all of you have put in. And and just as far as the retention ponds and things like that, if they do get clogged up, it's always, after they get clogged up, there's something happens. You know, after they get filled up and the water runs out and all the other people in the street are having problems that, you know, that those problems are taken care of. It's very rarely before because you don't know when those things are going to happen. So, all right, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vasquez. We, we appreciate your, your thoughts and your concerns, and we share those concerns, which is why you see that board members have gone out to the site. We've been asking questions. Certainly earlier, I asked a question about what happens if this stormwater management area is, is inundated. Certainly, we have spoken many times in board meetings about the fact that the DEM standards for a 100-year storm need to be revised because they don't necessarily reflect what we are now seeing. And we don't take waivers lightly. We feel that they need to be justified. And rather than saying, well, it's peculiar circumstances, that's why you heard the comments about this applicant, upon purchasing this property, had to have been well-aware of the wetland situation, the drainage, and so on. So again, thank you. I believe the next person is Bill Rivard.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'd like to point out an important point about the letter from Lot 8. This is somebody who's made a very big investment into this neighborhood, and her comments should be considered. I also am an owner on Magnolia Lane. We've looked very carefully at this project. We are also concerned about everything being handled properly by the board. Seems to me from watching the call tonight, and I apologize not being involved earlier, this has been looked at. This has been sniffed out by the town engineer, by David. And hard work has been done to make sure that this has been planned out properly. Let's not lose sight of the fact that these are new neighbors in the neighborhood, and we need to be represented and heard from.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the letter that we submitted by email. To be admitted to the record, please, in our support of the project.
Jay, I believe you have that as part of the record. And what, do you have a date of when that was submitted via email?
It was last week. I can send it again.
No, we, I do have it. I was just trying to locate it buried in the windows that I have. It was submitted on Saturday, the 15th, at 10:23 a.m.
We're also making a very big investment in this neighborhood, and I think I understand the neighbors' concerns. But what, what are the real questions here? You know, you have before you the zoning versus the subdivision. Amy handled how that needs to be addressed. This project has been going on for quite some time. We can let neighbors that don't want new houses in the neighborhood drag this on, or you can move forward with a beautiful development that's going in. And I think Amy needs to clarify legally more what needs to be addressed tonight because it sounds like it's already been handled.
Thank you, Mr. Rivard. The next person with their hand up is Timothy Deering.
Hi, this is Leslie and Timothy Deering. We are the normal people that live at 93 Cleveland Street. We have spoken at many meetings before. First off, I'm terribly disheartened to hear that the entire northern part of the development was able to proceed without any planning board review. That's incredibly concerning, but that's what's done is done. I do appreciate everybody on the board that has gone and taken a walk through this property. We're very interested in seeing what the final landscaping and finishing touches are for the northern end. I know you're talking about the southern end tonight, so I will concentrate on that. This is a huge question, whether the zoning ordinance or the subdivision regulations take precedent. Because so much of the time, we've been fighting what now apparently are subdivision regulations. And it's a big waste of time if it is actually zoning board setbacks that are the precedent to be followed. Is that a decision that the board will be making by 11 o'clock this evening, or is that something that will be continued?
We, this is at the conceptual master plan stage, and after hearing from the public, and mind you, we do have three other public hearings this evening, the board will make a decision as to whether to continue. You have heard from board members and from Jamie Rabbit, the Director of Planning, that there is some additional information and mapping that we would like to see. So it is probably unlikely that a decision will be made this evening.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rosemary Galliani. I think you're still muted.
Rosemary, you are unmuted. Not sure if your microphone is on. But we can't hear you. Rosemary, if you're having technical difficulties, please send me an email with your phone number and I will return the call. My email is the letter J. Parker at South Kingstown. at southkingtonri.com. And you can also find that on the Planning Department website on the town webpage.
Thanks, Jay. And while we're waiting for Rosemary to get through her technical difficulties, Jamie, it might be helpful for you to perhaps talk about what additional information we would like to see as well as any additional comments from board members. I think that it may be worthwhile to have something from Amy relative to this site as a whole. Seeing as it has been the topic of conversation in previous hearings. And the previous speaker mentioned what might occur for landscaping in the northern portion of the parcel, which it's my understanding that this board will not be privy to based on the the fact that we really had no, we had no authority on the previous portion because it had been subdivided at a much earlier date. So Amy, while we're waiting, you could clarify that for the board and for the members of the public.
Is this, Maria, is this something you want in writing for the next meeting?
I think that would be helpful to have it in writing. And that way it will be part of the record available for the public to see and so on.
Will do.
Thank you. Thank you. Jamie.
Ms. Mack, with listening to the information submitted by the applicant tonight, which I think added some clarity to the application process, but also added some items that need further research by particular board members with regards to those. Again, it's not that they didn't do certain things, but I would term it as that they should show a complete density calculation as it relates to their land area, the land unsuitable, the land suitable, and modify that both numerically and almost graphically as what they're included as buildable and not, not buildable area. I think that will bode well for the applicant to be able to clearly articulate that to the board. With that, I think the issue of what is open space and/or that 10% can go hand in hand with that analysis. So that Mr. Landry, to his point tonight, that there are in all likelihood areas that will be dedicated to each unit as it relates to either rental or ownership of those units. And that should at least in attempt to estimate what those areas would be. And then show how those areas would interact or relate to their proposed open space areas. And then there may be opportunities working with their design team to make that space functional and integrated in with their proposed four units versus it's just a space over there to the left somewhere. With that, I also see clarification from Amy to both her point and Mr. Landry's point with regards to the 100 foot setback and the interrelationship between the subdivision regulations and the zoning regulations and what takes precedence. Because that's important with regards to Mr. Landry's application, which includes a waiver request, which he testified, although it's included, they feel they don't need it. If it ultimately, from a legal perspective, is not needed, then the discussion of hardship and proper planning may be mooted. And then the planning board is really looking at the dimensional requirements and integration of the the site from a dimensional standpoint and, and building area standpoint. Again, Maria, to your point with regards to the just clarification on the individual lots were created, they were plotted, and this application doesn't deal in essence with the development. It deals with the development of an individual lot in a previously approved subdivision that has been plotted and a lot of record for many years. And again, that's been discussed, but I don't think we have a clear point A to point B task associated with that. And then probably the last thing is just solidifying that landscaping. We'd love an opportunity to speak with the applicant just on surface treatments for the proposed parking areas and whether they're, they're, you know, grass paved or stone dust or some other type material or pervious brick pavers to solidify that, that area within the development. But those were the primary, I think those were four items, three to me being real solid dimensional issues that need to be resolved in essence to support the applicant's stance and to really solidify John D'Agostino's position as an applicant and his rights to develop this within the regulations. And it may make the issue of waiver and hardships moot when we incorporate that with a solid legal opinion from counsel.
Thanks, Jamie. Joe has his hand up and then we'll go back to Rosemary.
On the conditions of approval H, Jamie, I would not be in favor of the way it's written now in granting a waiver because typically a waiver would be granted based on the uniqueness of the lot. However, in this particular case, the hardship is self-created by the developer. So I wouldn't be in favor of the granting the waiver. However, I also understand Amy's discussion in council relative to the zoning. So I think that the proper condition of approval there was that a waiver is not required because it meets the zoning regulation, which has precedent over the subdivision reg. So I think that might be the better way for the condition of approval. As far as the land suitable for development, it's a little disappointing because this was a topic that was brought up last meeting and I thought that it would be resolved. So I guess, Mr. Russo, I ask before you actually do the mapping and your calculations that you get with staff and staff with Amy, so that there's a common understanding of what should be included and what we have discretion on, so that that is what your calculations are based on. And that we have, you know, consistency between the town and the calculations that you show at the next, next meeting.
Thanks, Joe. Well said. Rosemary. It looks like you're unmuted. Jay, do you have any? Have you been able to help her?
I don't. I did not receive an email. Not really sure what the technical issue is at the moment.
Possible, Jay, that under her settings, she doesn't have her microphone volume turned up.
She possibly may not have the right microphone on. Hold on. Mr. Vasquez has his hand. I will let him speak.
Yes, why don't we go to Mr. Vasquez while we're waiting to see if we can remedy the problem for Rosemary.
Thank you. I'm just responding to what Mr. Rabbit said. If he could clarify when he said that this development has been in process for many years, can he tell me what he means by many years? Thank you.
Clarifying, this project has been in process for many years. The lot that is being developed has been a lot of record associated with the prior development. Maria Mack, as the Chair, has asked Amy Gones, the Board's Legal Counsel, to further address that at their next meeting, if the intent is to table this tonight.
Mr. Vasquez, does that answer your question?
Not, not really.
Hopefully the legal, the written legal statement will help. We were, this is something that has never occurred, certainly in my time on the board. And it was a surprise to all of us that it was previously subdivided and was not subject to any kind of planning board review. And had it been, then this area as a whole would have been looked at under the normal process by the board. And it would have been subject to inclusionary zoning, which means that there would have been a density bonus on this site for the production of affordable housing.
Right.
Madam Chair, I may have be able to provide some additional information to Mr. Vasquez. The development of this area, this site, Magnolia Lane, formerly known as Wilson and Tarn, was started back, I believe sometime in 2016. It predates any of the planners that are here currently, including myself. I started working with the town in September of 2018. It's my understanding that there were plans originally proposed for development on the, along Magnolia Lane that were not what is being, what is shown today. It was during that time period that that project was under review that they discovered a plat that was recorded in 1941, which allowed them to, for lack of a better word, abandon the plans that they had. And they changed their approach and came forward with what we have today. That's, that's it in a nutshell. There's a lot of history on it that I will fully admit I am not aware of. But again, that's the best explanation that I can provide.
But that's only for the northern lot. Correct? That 1941 was only for the northern lot.
I, again, I don't, off the top of my head and without doing any additional research on what was included on the plat that was discovered, I'm not, I don't have enough confidence to say that.
And I think.
Madam Chair, Staff, Madam Chair. We are, we are all working remote, attending this Zoom meeting. We do not have access to complete files. I think the Planning Board and their discussion and diligence tonight has asked Amy Gones, your Legal Counsel, to address this. We do not perhaps have the very poignant questions on specific dates that Mr. Vasquez is asking tonight. There is a litany of correspondence and legal references contained within the file associated with this property in our department files in South Kingston.
Thank you, Jamie. Jay, have you given Rosemary a phone number that she could call into? Perhaps she can access the meeting that way.
Yes, Rosemary, if you refer to the agenda, there are a number of different phone numbers that you can use to access the meeting by phone. If you continue to have difficulty with the Zoom web application, feel free to call those numbers and attempt to provide your correspondence that way.
It is a microphone issue. Just, I don't know if Scagliani can hear us, but next to the mute button, there's a little, usually a little sort of up arrow that allows you to have a, there's a, you can select what microphone you're using that way.
If she is unable to connect, I think we have summarized some of the concerns from this evening. And it would make sense for us to continue this public hearing to our next meeting, which I believe is February 22nd. Is that correct, Jamie? Or Jay?
That is correct.
Anything from Rosemary at this point?
No, Madam Chair.
Nothing. So would someone like to make the motion to continue this public hearing to our next regular meeting?
I'll make that motion to continue the meeting, this public hearing until our next regular meeting, which is February 22nd.
We have a motion from Joe. I believe that was a very quick second from Paul. Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Raise your hands, please, so it's. Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just, I just want to let Rosemary, Ms. Galliani, know that I'm going to lower her hand and remove permission to speak and encourage her to contact myself either via email or by phone tomorrow in the office. And I'll be glad to help try to resolve any issue that she might be having.
Thanks, Jay. That's an excellent idea. Let's move on to our next agenda item. The next agenda is public hearing. Major multi-household land development project preliminary plan, the residences on Holly. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Promoting Mr. Kenyon at the moment. Mr. Rosen.
And Mr. Kenyon, before you begin, I just want to give you a heads up if you have not been listening that we do have two other public hearings in addition to yours this evening. And we are approaching, it is quarter to nine. We generally take the five minute break at nine o'clock. So just so that you're aware.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are aware and I believe we're going to be relatively brief with our presentation tonight.
Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you for the record. I'm John Kenyon, Attorney for the Applicant, Scott Hallberg. And we're here tonight for the preliminary plan, public hearing for the residence on Holly, major land development. The property is located on Holly Street. It's 1.3 acres in size and it's in a commercial neighborhood zoning district. The applicant received master plan approval last April for a multi-household land development project with several conditions. The approved plan included six buildings, each containing two residential dwelling units. And three of those units would be designated as low to moderate income. The development met the density and setback requirements under the zoning ordinance. As was discussed in the last meeting, the applicant did receive waivers from the minimum front yard setback and the distance between buildings, which is found in the subdivision regulations. Since receiving master plan approval, the applicant applied for and received their RITD's permit from RIDM. The project engineer, Josh Rosen, submitted a drainage plan utilizing low impact drainage methodology and along with a proposed operation and maintenance plan. He also submitted a soil erosion and sediment control plan. There were no other state approvals that were required. We did receive a letter from the Union Fire District stating that they, they had no objection to the project. Stephen Rogers is the project architect. He submitted renderings for the proposed buildings. And as the board most likely recalls, the architecture was somewhat tied into the granting of the waivers, which was why we submitted the proposed renderings. The TRC reviewed this in November. They requested some more information, which has been provided. We also submitted a landscape plan for the project. One of the issues that came up with the planning staff was the open space. And that was just inadvertently left out of the, the plans that were submitted. The open space is virtually identical to what was proposed at master plan. The applicants here tonight, along with Josh Rosen and Stephen Rogers, at this time, maybe if we could just have Josh briefly go over any of the proposed changes since master plan. And then also address the issue raised about the open space.
Certainly. And Josh, please identify yourself for the record. Certainly. And Josh, please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Josh Rosen, Rhode Island Registered Professional Engineer with Princeby Engineering, Inc., office at 27 Secana Road Drive in Tiberton. So as Mr. Kenyon summarized, we, we basically have gone through the preliminary process, including the engineering design. You folks have seen this plan last, obviously at master plan and through the TRC process at preliminary. A lot of the changes, to be honest, you know, were relatively minor. The, Mr. Rogers is obviously here with us as part of the team on the architectural standpoint. There was a lot of attention paid to that during master plan. And so some of the revisions that he might talk about this evening with the building layouts and building footprints were really on an architectural standpoint. The design process itself, on our behalf, basically considered the stormwater elements and the landscape design. Those are the primary items that were really added to the nuts and bolts of the plan. A couple of small things, a little bit of a layout with the sewer. Mr. Shock at TRC brought up a couple of good points regarding the placement of the manholes and the configuration of the sewer connections. We've attended to those. We've also reviewed the location of the water services again with SUEZ, who's, we reviewed the process and reviewed the project and approved everything you see with respect to the water utility. Your fire department, or Union Fire, rather, fire chief looked at the plan. We have adequate fire hydrants within proximity to the properties and the, and the proposed building units. So we're good there. Obviously, as you know, there was a sidewalk extension discussed at master plan, and those elements have been thoroughly vetted through the design process. And that sidewalk extension to the south of this project along Holly Street, all the way across the frontage to the north, has been added to the plans. And aside from that, again, it's really, really based on the stormwater, which we received approval through Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management and their RITD's program for water flooding and stormwater permit. We've added some of the fencing requirements or screening requirements that we agreed to back at master plan with respect to the rear yard or the rear of the property behind building number six, for example, where it was in a butter present from Lot Number 108. We've provided a six-foot-high stockade fence along the property line in that section. And again, the open space, just to, just to summarize, we came to the board with the master plan that proposed about 15% open space, where 10% was required. And that information was inadvertently left out of the preliminary plan. And actually, today, we did supplement our plan set with a PDF version of the updated plan to your planning department. And basically reconfirmed our open space. We illustrated where the open space was shown on the plan. And we, obviously, again, we reconfirmed, we have about 15.3% open space provided after our final preliminary design. So with that said, I think that's kind of a summary of where, where we started after receiving the master plan approval, where we are today, relative to the plan set and the design. I think maybe you could certainly ask me any questions, but if the chair sees fit, maybe I'll have Mr. Rogers give a brief overview on some of the architectural elements that were added, if that, if that sounds good at this point.
Yes, that makes the most sense. Then we can ask questions after that.
Fair enough.
So, Mr. Rogers, you are up.
Yeah, one, one moment, Madam Chair, I'm just promoting Mr. Rogers now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Rogers, architect, licensed architect in the state of Rhode Island. And we did the, the elevations for the Holly Street project. Met with the TRC, as Josh said earlier, and even before that, with Mr. Rabbit. And the request was that porches be added to these, to the building. And so we did that. And you can see in the elevations here, there is a wraparound porch that does face Holly Street. And I guess it would be better to go back to the rendering, the color rendering, please. The street perspective. So this, this was across the street, looking back at the development. We were working with the same footprints that Josh had given us, but added the porches to this and then changed a little bit on what, what buildings had garages face the street. And that was based on the request from, from Mr. Rabbit and other planning members. So as you can see here, it's six units, two units per building. We're meeting our setbacks. Material for this is, will be most likely vinyl siding, exact trim. And I'm going to leave it at that, if there's any questions from the planning.
Questions from board members, from Mr. Rogers? If there are none, let's go back to Mr. Rosen. And are there questions relative to site plan layout or engineering issues? Robin? Go ahead, Robin.
We received some photographs in the packet showing some serious flooding going on on an abutting lot. And I'm wondering if Mr. Rosen is aware of that situation? And how are you dealing with water and draining?
So I'm not aware of flooding on this property at all. Actually, the property is very dry relative to area flooding downstream. I'm, I'm guessing that's what you're alluding to on a different property. But this property is an infill lot between the residential folks on Holly Street to the west and Holly Street itself. And stormwater in this sub-area, basically a sheet flows across the property. And that's what we know. And the drainage design was put together in a fashion that any of the runoff that we're creating, that's in excess of the pre-development conditions, is mitigated on-site. We're using a porous pavement surface. We're using a bio-retention infiltration area. And we're managing the water accordingly, the way we, we're charged to do based on the stormwater manual that the state put forth. And we're not, we're not exacerbating any conditions off-site or down gradient from our project as a result of what's proposed on these plans today.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Paul Jordan. I'm looking at, I'm not sure, it's the third page in the plan set that shows the, the drainage structure behind buildings one and two. And it shows an emergency overflow weir. So where does the flow from the emergency overflow weir go? I mean, there is a low spot there on the site. The contours show the drainage flowing to the west toward the backs of those houses on, on Oak Street. And then the emergency overflow weir, I'm just, it's greater than a 100-year storm, and this thing overflows. Where does that water go?
So the design of our stormwater management system, particularly that overflow weir and, and the placement of the weir is actually directed at the same location that there's a particular path and concentration of flow under the existing condition. So there's a high spot at the middle of the property at its front, at Holly Street. And based on the topographic information, that water flows generally to the northwestern corner of the property in the area that that overflow is. So we're mimicking the historical drainage pattern as best that we possibly can. In fact, we're, we're, we're making that location coincide with where that flow goes today. Again, it's a greater-than-100-year storm event where there would be actual overflow out of that stormwater area. But it's been located purposefully in that location. One, it's directed toward a large vegetated area where it can go overland through a section of wooded, vegetated features before it turns into shallow concentrated flow across the down gradient area.
Follow-up on that. Currently, the lot is just covered in brush.
Correct.
And so we have a 100-year or greater-than-100-year storm, and the flow is going to that low spot. But now we're paving, putting in rooftops. Would we potentially have a larger volume of water now to deal with in a 100-year storm flowing to that same location?
You know, typically, that, that's a fair point in the sense that, you know, in some of the projects, we can slow the rate down, but there's still a volume issue. However, in this particular project, we not only reduced the rate of runoff leaving the property, we also reduced the volume. And that's just based on the, the type of best management practice selected and utilized on the site. So we've got some recharge, we've got some infiltration. We've disconnected our driveway runoff via the porous asphalt, porous pavement. So that's led to a reduction in volume and rate with, where we can safely say that we're, we're not increasing those two components across that property line in post-development conditions.
So we know that this area does flood now in a, in a heavy storm. We wouldn't expect to see any greater amount of flooding from a greater-than-100-year storm in that, in that low spot.
We, yeah, we analyzed a 100-year storm event and all the storms that were smaller than the 100-year. So that would be the case for those events.
I'm not, let me try again. If, if this is developed and we have a greater-than-100-year storm, I think what you're saying is we wouldn't expect to see any greater volume of water there. We wouldn't see any more flooding with this development, or there is some potential for-
You have a greater-than-100-year storm event, though. All those down, every downgrading area is going to be flooded.
Okay.
Yeah. The same way it is right now, I guess, is-
I guess what, you know, my, my question is, just getting at the concerns of the neighbors. If their backyards are flooding now in some rainstorms, are they going to see more flooding?
Not, not in the rainstorms that we analyzed, no.
Okay.
I, I didn't analyze a 500-year event, but I'm just saying from a one-year event to the 100-year.
Thank you.
To follow up on Paul's question, Josh, could you show us with the cursor the area that you were not only referring to, but the forested area where you said the flow would be directed toward?
I can do that. I'm wondering-
Josh, I just gave you remote access.
Thank you, Jay. Could we quickly pull up the existing conditions plan and then come back to this one, do you mind? So with the cursor, we have a concentration path from the middle of the site where the high point is down-
Excuse me, excuse me, Josh.
Yeah?
I think you have to accept.
Oh, sorry. Am I good now?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got this-
Yes.
High area on the site and this concentration path right now for the stormwater is going to take us right through this location and down to Oak Street, if you guys can follow that. So that's what I was alluding to of the historical concentration path for the, for the runoff across the section of this property. If we go back now, Jay, to the proposed conditions, please. And take that and to answer or follow up on Maria's question. This is where the outfall is, which, or overflow weir, which aligns with that location of the path of flow that leaves the property heading down to Oak Street. There's a vegetated area through this section here that buffers the property, the development property with the, with the neighbors, where that flow, greater-than-100-year storm, would actually be released through this vegetated area first before coming out in that historical pattern.
Susan?
Hi, I have a couple of questions. So going back to that corner that we were just looking at in the northwest. Yep, so right in that corner, just above building number one, right now you have a number of mature, healthy, happy oak trees. And the oak trees are also taking up a great amount of water out of that water table. Are you proposing to keep any of those oak trees? Have you considered keeping any of those oak trees? Or can we keep some of those oak trees?
That whole stand of mature vegetation is proposed to be maintained. That tree line to the west of the, of the building number one, building number two in the drainage area, that whole vegetated section will be untouched.
So from the street, I didn't walk the site, but from the streets, behind the fire station, there are some oak trees that are probably two feet in diameter. Are those in that vast vegetated strip? Or are those in your development space? Like, do you have a, do you have a pre-existing conditions plan that shows where the trees are located? Or aerial photograph or something that shows where those trees are?
Yeah, so the, on this plan that's on the screen right now, there's a tree line shown where it's actually, it's labeled the vegetated screen here. And so this hump line is the existing tree line at the rear of the property.
Yep.
And it go, and, and I think this is what you're alluding to, Susan. It goes out to the north behind the fire station building, right in this fashion here.
No, so the ones I'm, the ones I think I see from the road look like they're south of the fire station. But I can't see where the property line is from the street. So I don't know if they're on your property or if they're coming down, or if they are. It sort of looks like it's right near the property line, if, looking at this map.
Yeah, there's, there's a cleared area next to the fire station. And then there's an array of those oak trees right to the north of our property that we're not obviously going to touch.
Oh, so those, so the oak trees that I see from Holly Street are not yours?
Correct. You see how the property kind of, the property line has this like kind of cut out here?
Yes.
That, so that's why it might be a little deceiving. I don't know.
That's really helpful. Thank you. I have another couple of questions. This split rail fence, I don't remember seeing that on a previous plan. And I wonder about the purpose of the split rail fence. And I especially wonder about, one corner of the fence appears to be less than, maybe less than a foot away from one of the porches of one of the homes. Can I just understand if that's indeed the case? And why, why the split rail fence and why so close to the homes? That would be on-
I, I see next to building four. So the purpose of the split rail fence was kind of to provide another feature as part of our landscape plan to, to give a certain kind of feel for that private space, but also break up that lawn and graded area along the upper section of where the stormwater system is going to start. Because obviously for that bioretention infiltration area, there's some grade change that slopes down into that feature. So we thought that the split rail fence, three foot high split rail fence would be an effective complement to, to sort of the yard space and again, to break, to break that transition. It doesn't necessarily need to be as pronounced at building four where that angle point comes together. We could soften that or put a chamfer in that line so that it more directly follow the upper grading leading down to that portion of the stormwater area. So that's, that's an easy fix for us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And my last question, and I know that one of the homeowners is here in the audience today. Was the stockade fence something that the homeowners in the neighborhood have been consulted with? Or could they be part of that conversation about whether they would prefer a stockade fence or some sort of more vegetated buffer there? And if they want the stockade fence and you want it, more power to it. But I guess I just would like to make sure that the neighbors have maybe a say in that choice.
Yeah. So I'm not sure that there was a direct conversation, to be honest. I just, we just had a takeaway from the master plan. And I think it may even have been a condition, you know, for some screening for headlights going down that driveway. So that's why we selected the stockade fence. We also acknowledge the fact that behind that fence, as of right now, behind the proposed fence, there's a section of vegetation about 25 feet wide or so, right behind that area. So we just selected that fence partly on the discussion at master plan and then partly on something that we were able to marry to the rest of the concept that we put, put forth at the preliminary design. So if there's any other input, I would, would certainly welcome it. And then we would have to vet that through the applicant and see and the owner, owner applicant and see how they'd want to deal with it, if there's a different request from the neighbors.
Thank you for being open to the conversation with the neighbors in the future. And those are my only questions right now. So thanks so much for answering my questions.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks, Josh. And to follow up to Susan's question, it would be important that if a stockade fence were installed, that it did not have a negative impact on the vegetation, that the existing vegetation that provides such an important buffer and area for infiltration.
Understood. Thank you.
Joe, go ahead. You have your hand up.
Josh, if you had impervious pavement where you're currently showing porous pavement, would the volume of the retention basin still be sufficient to keep the post-development runoff to the pre-development, both in volume and flow? Or are you using the porous pavement in order to meet the minimum requirements?
That's a great question. So the, the porous pavement, I, I can't answer from the perspective of the exact analysis, whether or not those numbers would in fact accommodate an impervious surface. I know there's certainly freeboard extra volume in the actual bioretention infiltration area. Whether or not that freeboard is enough to accommodate the entire amount of driveway surface as impervious, that I don't know the answer to, Mr. Murphy.
So Maria, this is something that would be, that I have a concern over. As you know, the porous pavement requires pretty diligent maintenance. So I'm a fan of the porous pavement when it is used to exceed the minimum requirements, but not necessarily when it's used to meet the minimum requirements. The concern that I have is that the cost and the responsibility of the maintenance of this porous pavement would fall on the HOA. But the consequences, if that is not done, and it does require a pretty diligent maintenance, falls on the neighboring properties that we already see have some, some issues. So I'd be more supportive of a drainage plan where it would meet the, the post-development would meet the pre-development without the need for a diligent maintenance plan.
Thanks, Joe. I'm sure that Josh can look into that and give us more detailed information. You know, the board in the past has been very supportive of pervious pavement and I think we all understand that there's always maintenance regardless of what you're doing. So more information would be appreciated and in general, we consider that it's better for the environment to have more, more pervious surfaces and of course, more plantings and so on, because it allows for greater infiltration. Is there anyone else who has questions? If there are no further questions from board, oh, I do have one question for, I don't, I assume it's probably Josh would answer this, even though he's not the landscape architect. The trees that are shown on the planting plan, are those located in the right of way or are they on the property? And what would be the optimal situation to maintain those trees long-term? So that if any of those, because those trees are going to be very important to the streetscape. And if they were to become diseased or injured, how would, if they were under the auspices of the homeowners association versus any other entity, how could those be maintained properly going forward?
Those are great, great questions. I almost wish Karen was here to answer those. I do know that when Karen and I collaborated, Karen Beck, the landscape architect that works with us, when we collaborated on the design, those trees are intended to be basically right on the property line. There's a, a little bit of a setback between the back of that proposed sidewalk and the front property line. And those were particularly placed to be on the property line. I don't know where that leads us as far as the maintenance. But that's something that I could, we can look into and, and get back to the board and to the staff on, or, you know, the staff at least and, and have an answer on that. We, we certainly agree that the reason that they're there and placed in concert with the other landscaping elements on site, including the foundation plantings and the plantings in the side yards is to obviously complement the project and to enhance that streetscape. So it's certainly not, won't be the intent to not provide that requisite maintenance and not upkeep that, those items as far as the vegetation when installed, because that would certainly detract from the project. And that's obviously not our intent, nor is it of the owner and project developer. So.
Exactly. Thank you.
You're mute, Maria.
Can I ask a question?
Maria, you're, you're muted.
I'd like to ask some questions.
Go ahead, Rich. Certainly.
Rich, Birmingham town engineer. Josh, are you, it, it appears as though from the narrative that you are increasing flow and volume to, to Holly Street.
Mike, that's, you are, you are 100% correct on that. We've demonstrated an overall project reduction in both those items. However, the Holly Street increase is driven solely on the new sidewalk.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to ask you if you could at least equate it to, you know, somehow be related to the sidewalk. And I can't tell, it doesn't say it in here, but, but, but because it is a modest increase, it is on the 10 year as well as 100 year storm. But it, it is an increase. But and I understand it's, it's really due to the sidewalk, which really becomes a public improvement in the end. And there is drainage infrastructure in, in Holly Street. Man, that's really the only comment I had on this. I, I did a very quick review. I, you know, I, 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 I share Joe's concern for the, the impervious, the impervious pavement. I know that now the, the, so the, the pavement that you're proposing as impervious, are you, are you, it's not pavement, it's going to be.
Porous asphalt.
Oh, it is porous asphalt. Oh, okay. Because well, the detail kind of shows as though it might be like concrete pavers or something. Am I, am I wrong in that?
I think the, I think the concrete pavers were intended for the walkways from the driveway surface to the buildings.
Okay.
And if it's, if it's not labeled as such, we can clarify on the plans.
Rich, relating to your question.
Of course, course papers in detail for driveway. So it's the same, same details, just a different surface. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
I mean, I share the same concern with course papers. We have real, we have no, we have no way to really regulate it long-term. We have, we have a three or four ongoing issues in town now with, with situations where they said it was going to be porous. It's not porous, where they have, have retreated the surface. You know, it's just difficult for us to track it. First of all, and it's difficult for us to assure that it gets maintained properly over a long term. But otherwise, I, I agree with you that the, the, the surface, the discharge to Holly has got to be mostly related to the, you know, the sidewalks. Thank you. And thank you for doing the volume. I know we talked about it in the early stage, but you're, you're also addressing the steep volume, which I appreciate.
Thank you, Rich.
And Rich, could you give us some sense of whether or not the existing drainage system in Holly Street can handle what Josh was referring to?
Well, you know, Holly, Holly Street isn't, I, I don't, I don't believe Holly Street exhibits issues. There is a problem on Oak and what, all of these systems tend to tie in in that what's, there seems to be a manhole behind this property. At the back of the property, there's a, a pretty large line that runs subsurface and discharges south on the budding property by, I believe it's a medical building or something or other, just further south is a depression there. And, you know, the whole system kind of backs up. And then this, this property seems to discharge towards the north, like Josh was saying, towards the north. And then it kind of gets over to Holly. It kind of inundates all these backyards. I, I sort of think that this depression that's being proposed, this is a very big depression. It's, you know, four or five feet deep. It's, I think it's pretty, it's more than that, maybe close to that. But I think this may help in small storms. But you know, as Paul, as Paul indicates, you know, we're not, we don't size for greater than 100 years storms. We just don't. Anything greater than 100 years storm is going to be a problem across the board. It's going to be everywhere. You know, we just don't, nothing aside for greater than 100. The only one I know of is over on, there's one little subdivision up on the hill that was designed for, for a greater storm than that. But that was an isolated, there was no outfall to anything. And so in that situation was a little different. This is an infiltration pond. I've been on this site a number of times. It seems very dry to me. I, I just, I don't know. I mean, it's, I, I, I don't know that it's a, they are proposing, you know, a decrease in, in total volume in the back area, in the front area we just talked about. That's towards Holly. It's a little different, but in the back here, it's a decrease in volume. Again, it's just like the last application. It's a decrease in flow and volume at 100 year storm. I mean, that's a, a higher standard than what DEM asked for. So I feel comfortable with it at this point, the way it's designed.
Thanks, Rich. And it, it is noteworthy that the board is always concerned about unintended consequences and looking at sort of the big picture, even if we have one particular piece of an area in front of us. If, if there are drainage issues in the larger area, that is something that I think the town should be looking at and thinking about mitigation in the future.
We have, we have an issue in town now. There's, there's, there's always something going on, but, but we'll have ponds like this that have a point discharge. But often when you, when you see a problem is when, when the point discharge is flowing, even on lower storms, like a 25 year storm or a two year storm even, where it's always sort of flowing, we create this point discharge. And then we see issues downstream where people now have a stream running through their property. In this case, because what they're suggesting is they want to infiltrate everything up to 100 year storm. It's a little different. You don't have a point discharge unless of course it goes greater than 100 year. That's what makes me feel a little bit more comfortable about it.
And, and you said that this, this site is relatively dry. Is that due to the soils on site or the water table or both? So that we have a sense of.
I would say both. Issues that we're seeing on Oak are more related to the, the conveyance, the conveyance that runs, you know, from those properties over through here. It's just a, it's kind of a tight space for a lot of volume. There's a lot of water coming down Oak from both directions. And it consolidates and it, it, it ponds in this one area and it tops the curb. It's, it's a real issue. I'm not quite sure how to handle it. It's a longstanding condition that we're, we're trying to get our arms around now unrelated to this. So I don't think it's high, high groundwater is what I'm saying. I think there's just a volume flow coming off of a lot of properties. Or a flow coming off a lot of properties. But I, I, I haven't looked at test hole data specifically. I've only just sort of dove into this report. So I just haven't looked at, I can't say what the, what the infiltration rates are. What is the infiltration rate you're using? I thought it was 8.23, Josh. 8.27. So that's for sandy soil. So I got to assume it's sandy soil.
We had a gravelly core sand with cobbles as our, our soil. So.
8.27, the infiltration rate. That's a standard rate for sandy or gravelly soil.
Thanks, Rich. Any questions, comments from board members? If there are none, we have a few hands raised in the audience. Jay, could you bring in Ed Kimmerline? Or unmute him if necessary. It looks like he's actually unmuted.
Madam Chair, I'm going to have to bring him in as a panelist. I got a notification that his Zoom app was not the most recent version. Mr. Kimmerlin, if you could unmute yourself.
Okay. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
The members of the board have my questions already, but I'm going to bring them up again for those people who, I'm sorry, my name's Ed Kimmerline. I'm at 97 Oak Street. It's the property that Joshua showed all the water flowing through in his plan. So I'm going to bring up my questions that they already have, but I also had sent the board members photographs of the flooding of that area back there. I am more than ready, willing and able to share those pictures with everyone tonight. If that's not proper, I'll send them to whoever I need to send them to. The, the problem I have is with the, the water. The biggest problem I have is with the water. The retention pond, the emergency ware is at elevation of 34.75, which is approximately the height of my property. So they're showing that emergency ware flowing out directly towards my property. The retention, I mean, the, the elevation lines that you're showing there are 38, 36, 34 as it heads down. as it heads down into the pond, and then the overflow is at 34.75. So the fact that they're calling this deep pond is not a deep pond because it overflows at 34. Um, and it overflows directly into my property. Um, and again, I, I can show you pictures of flooding in that property. Um, I have lived here for nearly 30 years, I have seen that area back there flood four to five to six times easily. Um, hate to tell you, but I haven't lived here 600 years. Um, those are not 100-year storms. Um, so I don't, I don't see how that, it's, it, it seems as though the water retention issue is sending the water directly towards my property. One of the other issues is that the elevation of the property is being brought straight back from the Holly Street elevation at 38 feet, and then the back corner of that building one will also be at 38 feet. Now, that puts the elevation of that property at 38 feet, only 20 feet from my property. And then it's going to drop down to the elevation that it is now, and that is just going to channel that water more so, that runoff even more so into my property. Um, another point that I want to make to clarify for Josh and with Susan's question about those trees at that end, as long as we're talking about that, those large of trees are on that property, right where that building is being proposed. Again, I can show you pictures tonight that will show you that. Yes, there are trees that are on the fire station property, but there are large trees on that property in that area, and that would, would have to come down based on where you're planning that you're building. Um, so, um, and also the other point that he continued to make was that the vegetated line, the large vegetated area along that, that large vegetated area are my arborvitae's. They are not on that property, they are, and there is nothing else beyond my arborvitae. That vegetated line that he shows on that drawing shows that that vegetated line moves approximately 10 feet plus into the property, it does not. I can show you a picture of that. The only thing beyond my arborvitae's which come, you know, a foot and a half off of my property line, the only thing back there are small dead weeds that, that die, I can, again, I have a picture that I took last weekend. So, um, I am concerned that this retention pond and the water is directing everything directly towards my property, and there seems to be no answer to that. Um, considering that that property floods, it is not a dry area. And if you'd like, I can show you those pictures right now.
Um, I believe Jay sent those to us in our packet and therefore, um, along with the documents for this project, they should also be accessible on the town website. Jay, is that correct? No, they're not on the, they're not on the document.
No, we, um, again, this is Jay Parker, we have the digital copy, we have, we keep all of the correspondence that's transmitted for applications. Um, public correspondence is something, the content of which we can't control. So, uh, at this point in time, we don't put any public correspondence up on the, uh, website in regards to that.
I also just forwarded those, the exact same photographs, the same information that I forwarded to you people. I also just forwarded that information, uh, to Rich Borrenays so that he has that too. Um, I'm concerned, again, with the, the water runoff towards my property with no retention pond between my property and that property. And I can show those pictures right now.
Um, thank you, Mr. Kimmerline. I, I think that this issue is, is worth having a conversation, um, post-meeting and um, looking into this. I know that when Paul asked the question about the overflow and the wear, um, the direction of the, um, flow did appear to cross Mr. Kimmerline's, I believe, property. It was a little, little small to see the, um, the name that was on the, the screen, but again, we, we need to, um, assure that there is not going to be any um, further negative impact to adjacent properties due to this, um, application, and we all understand that DEM regs require no net increase in runoff, but nevertheless, it's always a good idea to try to connect with the neighbors and try to look at, um, existing issues if at all possible.
Maria, do you mind if I?
And just one thing, Josh, in those pictures, I have, there's eight to 10 inches of water, standing water across that entire area, and it runs right up to the contour line that you show on my property at 36 feet. So based on that simple line right there, it's, it's going to come into our property. And also into the approach, into the land right, uh, 87 Oaks.
Mar- Maria, this is Josh. Can I just, uh, add a little bit in the way of a discussion, I know, not to get too detailed, and I can, Mr. Kimmerline, I, I can appreciate your comments, I'm well aware of the various scenarios, um, in this neighborhood and the area with respect to the stormwater concerns and the, the localized flooding, including those in those backyards at, in various locations. Um, but part of the perspective, um, that we need to keep, this, this project, uh, represents, in, in the land area within the property limits, represents a small contributing area to the sub watershed that drains through your property. Um, I, I mentioned, uh, that particular flow path, but, um, what's going through that detention or retention area is approximately a half an acre of surface area. Um, there's no chance that a half an acre, um, is going to contribute to the size of the, the flooding that you're seeing. My point is, I think there's a larger watershed that drains through your area. Um, and while I can appreciate the concern that that might bring about on your property, um, I just want to make it clear that the, the, the development itself is not, um, its land area in the existing condition is nowhere near the, the total sum of, of what you're seeing as far as a contributing watershed. You're getting it from other locations to the north and to the west. Um, so, again, we've done as much as we can because we're intercepting about a half an acre of water that would normally get, um, uh, sent to your property unmitigated, and we're controlling it uh, and keeping it on our site while it infiltrates. So that's all, I just wanted to make sure we, we kept that perspective uh, on a little bit more global picture than just that, that, uh, one specific area on, on this development's property.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, could you wait a second, Mr. Kimmerline? Um, we, we do want to be sure that, um, we are not in any way, post-development, um, increase the problem that is pre-existing, pre-development. So, you know.
Absolutely.
Right, and the water that is flooding back there is coming through my arborvitae's from that property. It's not like it's flowing in from anywhere else, and it's, that water is, it doesn't just stop at my property line. It goes deeply into your existing property, that whole area back there, right where you're showing that retention pond, which, again, I make the point, it will not retain anything because it's emergency overflow, is the height of my property. So it's going to be, there's no retaining there, it's going to be coming directly into my property as soon as it gets to that height.
Um, Mr. Kimmerline, I think we, we would as a board like to follow up with that and get any additional clarification that we can from, um, from Mr. Rosen. Um, certainly, the more information we have, the better we are able to make a decision. We do understand watersheds, everything is connected, but again, um, attention to, uh, detail and to concerns of, um, neighboring property owners, um, are, are always important for the board. Um, we do have a few, we do have a few other people with their hands raised, so I would either like to get to those folks now, um, because we are now at 20 of 10, and we generally take a five-minute break at nine o'clock. So what would the board like to do? Susan?
Um, I would like to make sure that Mr. Kimmerline feels like he's been heard, and then take a five-minute break.
My apologies, I just inadvertently jumped the gun and sent him back as an attendee, I'll bring him in. He should be coming back as a panelist.
I see him now. So, Mr. Kimmerline, is there any additional information that you want to uh, bring forward to the board so that we can investigate this further and see, um, exactly what, if any, impacts this um, project might have on your flooding, uh, problem?
The flooding is the major issue, the other issue was that on the original plans, they showed a 20-foot vegetative barrier. Um, those plans were the ones that dated back, I think, to February or something like that, I can go back and look at it. And that, that buffer of vegetation is no longer in existence, the only thing they show is the vegetation that is on my property. Um, there is no vegetation barrier at all, um, along that backside of the property where it had, it did exist in the previous plans.
Um, and, and I understand their landscape architect is not in attendance this evening, I'm looking at the landscape plans, and it does appear that they have trees along that edge of the property, um, but not a, um, lumpy buffer or anything of that nature, so to speak. Gosh, you can clarify that perhaps?
Were those the drawings that were inadvertently left out, so that's why I don't have access to those?
I don't believe so, I'm looking at a landscape plan, um, that was in our packet that is, uh, up to date as far as I know. Jamie, do you?
No, the, the landscape plan that was provided is, uh, sheet five of the, um, the plan set that is on the website and has been distributed to board members.
I, I, on that landscape plan, along that back line, it just, it shows, the only that it shows is the existing vegetation. They show some large trees along the front, and they show a couple of large trees along the back, but there is everything along that back border between my property and 87 Oak Street. That is just the arborvitae's that are growing on my property. Um, and they, as I said, you're, you're talking about maybe a foot and a half that goes over into the other property of the backside of my plants. So there is no vegetative barrier there, other than mine.
And, yes, although it does state 20-foot partial landscape, uh, screen, um, the plant list does not indicate that those are plantings to, to be, uh, to be installed. So I think Mr. Kimmerline is probably correct in this, and, um, something to look at. I would imagine, Josh, could, could we give Josh just a chance to respond here?
This is Josh Maria. Um, the, the way the vegetation line is represented, it does, um, have a 10 to 12-foot vegetation within our property, and there is additional vegetation that goes across the Westley property line onto the both neighbors' properties. Um, and that in total is approximately 20 feet. We're not suggesting it's 20 feet on our project.
Understood. So, uh, again, so this is something that we can clarify before our next meeting, correct?
Uh, I, what, what would I need to clarify? Just give me some direction.
Uh, if you have an aerial view with an accurate property line, that might be helpful.
Well, this is, everything on this plan has been surveyed. The property boundary with the, the drainage next to it, with the tree lines, it's all relative to the, to our property. I mean, uh, things in space are, are, can be deceiving, uh, when you're, when you're out there, I, that's all, I don't, you know?
Yes, understood. Paul?
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm just looking at 2021 aerial photo, and, um, I have to agree with Mr. Kimmerline, it's, it's a very thin layer, I think we just need clarification, like, there's no, there's no 10 feet of vegetation extending across the property line that I can see. More like five feet, at the most.
Thank you, Paul. Um, oh, Susan, before we get to the other, other members of the public, go ahead.
Since we're up in this corner of the property, could I also ask for some clarification on the fate of the oak trees and where they're located as opposed to the property line? Uh, whether they, especially because they do take up so much groundwater, can they be preserved?
They're on the north side, that they're across the northerly boundary of the property, as I stated before. I mean, uh, we've got a prop, we've done a property survey. I don't know what else to say.
Mr. Kimmerline, we need to have one person at a time speak, so appreciate your patience. Paul?
Uh, just again, looking at the aerial photo, there are several trees that are gonna be located in the driveway for that northernmost building. So there are some large trees that are gonna come out.
Thanks, Paul. I do recall, um, driving along, uh, Holly Street, seeing some fairly large trees. Um, difficult to say if they were within the town right-of-way or on the property, but I, I do recall seeing those, so.
Is there any property marker there that we can see? Is there a monument or anything where, you know, someone could actually peek and see where the line would be?
Yeah, all the monuments were set, so we can, we can use those as a reference point. There are also the drainage structures that, the drainage structures were located as well, they're pretty visible.
May I ask for permission to, to, to go on your property and have a peek?
Um, I would defer that to Mr. Kenyon and Mr. Hallberg.
Okay.
And now I'm gonna defer that to Mr. Hallberg.
And is he here? I'm looking through, yes, he is. Jay, can you?
Well, while we're waiting for Scott to come in, I, I would note in that corner we're talking about, the, there, there's kind of a jog in the property line where I could see why it would look like those trees are on our property and they're actually on the, the neighboring property. Um, so maybe marking that so you can see it would help out.
Yes, that would actually. Uh, Mr. Hallberg, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for joining us.
So Scott, did you hear the, the question?
I did, yes, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
All right, uh, Ms. Tom Santilli. I believe you're still muted, Mr. Santilli. Um, perhaps, perhaps while Mr. Santilli is, uh, getting his microphone in order, we can take our five-minute break, it is now 9:49. Is everyone okay with that? All right, very good, we, we shall return in five minutes.
Dave's clock is broken.
Yeah, I was gonna say to Jay, I thought he, last time we did this, there was a countdown timer.
Yeah, there's a little X through it today.
Yeah, they, uh. I don't know, the extension that I used doesn't want to seem to cooperate.
We're out of practice.
That too.
So it looks as though we have everyone back. Let's continue on and hear from. Mr. Santilli. Mr. Santilli, you're still muted.
Santilli, if you can unmute yourself. You should be able to speak. I'm just saying to, I'm gonna lower your hand. Um, if you'd like to speak, please raise it again and I will. Give you the floor.
All right, let's move on. The next speaker is Jim Vasquez.
Hello again.
Hello again.
Jim Vasquez, 63 Oak Street. Um. Just a couple of things. I'm, I'm holding in my hand a copy of the waiver request that was originally presented, I believe, in, uh, December. Of 2020. Um. Could I get clarification on one of the waivers where it says that, um? Where there was a hundred foot setback, minimum 100 foot setback along any public street? And what the waiver is actually asking?
Uh, yes, Jamie, Jamie or Jay, would you like to? Explain that?
Sure. Uh, this project is a multi-household land development project. Within the subdivision regulations. Uh, there is a specific se- section dedicated to requirements for multi-house development projects. One of the requirements is that the project must be set back from a. Public street. By 100 feet. The applicant in this instance can't achieve that. So he's asking for a waiver from that requirement.
From 100 feet to what? Please, thank you.
Mr. Rosen, would you like to answer that? Or Mr. Kenyon?
Uh, well, I mean, the, the subdivision regulations that we're asking the waiver from aren't really that clear, but, uh, 100 foot setback. Uh, normally would apply to, uh. Buildings or accessory structures or accessory uses.
No, I, I understand that. He wa- uh, he wants a waiver instead of having 100 feet. He wants to put it how many feet? Away from the road. Instead of 100 feet away from the road, he wants it to build his house. 10 feet, 25 feet? 30 feet, 95 feet?
Yes, uh, Mr. Vasquez, uh, we can perhaps give Josh, if he is back with us, the opportunity to clarify.
Okay, it wouldn't be on any of the plans.
Yes, Mr. Vasquez, do you have a point with regards to their proposed relief?
Yes, I do, but it depends on how long. The difference.
Less than 100 feet.
Say that again, please. I'm sorry.
All right, I'm looking at plans at 11 by 17 and we don't have the applicant back with us. Could you continue with?
Mr. Rabbit, this, this is Josh. I can just maybe help to answer. The, um. If we're talking about the buildings. Um, these buildings and their porches have the closest point of 25 feet. To the property line. Uh, along Holly Street, the frontage, uh, property line that their, this property shares with the Holly Street right away. The dash line represents a setback line, which is the front setback. For the property, which is 25 feet. And as you see, some of the porches sit right on or inside rather. That 25 foot mark. So that's the closest point for any of the buildings that are, are shown on the plan.
Thank you, Josh.
Welcome.
Um, and as Jamie will attest to, the board does have the authority to, um, allow for waivers based on. Um, a particular site plan and relating to good planning principle.
Okay.
Um, if you have any more questions, could you just say them now so that we can answer them all in a row? Because there are other people waiting to speak after you and I, I don't want to leave them in limbo.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, I, I personally, I think 100 to 25 feet. Again, what we, you were talking about over on Magnolia, so he's creating his own problem. By wanting to build this many buildings on this site. Um. And then again, it's just, okay, well, well, instead of 100, we'll give him 25 feet. You know, that's a big difference.
Uh, again, as I said earlier, the board does have to provide justification for any waivers that it may or may not grant.
Justification is how you said, because you broke up a little bit.
Oh, yes, the board would have to, uh, find, make a finding that it's justified because of X, Y, or Z. Um, do you have any other questions that can be answered?
I have a couple of statements. One, uh, I had my lawyer talk to, uh, Mr. Kenyon. Um, about a year or so ago about the stockade fence behind our property. And it was my lawyer, Mr. Kenyon, that came up and agreed, uh, with the six foot stockade fence. Um, and I think they extended it behind my neighbor to the north. To go behind his property as well. Uh, so they have already spoken to us about that. I don't know if they spoke to, uh, Mr. Kimerline. Or Miss, uh, Bowen, um, to extend the stockade fence any further than, uh, to their properties or not, but, um, we have had. A dialogue with, uh, Mr. Kenyon on that. Um. And then the other thing is, uh, back in 1997. Uh, there was drainage already put on that property. And I'm not sure that was what was referred to earlier when Mr. Bourbonnet talked about a, um. A manhole cover already, uh, present on the property. Um. And that drainage would go down into. Uh, a drainage pond that was put into the back of behind the doctor's offices on. Uh, Holly Street. So I don't know if there's any drainage that would go that way instead of. To Mr. Kimerline's house or, uh, Miss Bowen's house to be able to help with the runoff there. Because that was already put in. Uh. When it was originally put in, they actually accidentally went on my property to put that in. But, uh, it was rectified, so, um. But I know exactly where that manhole cover is. Uh, and I think it is on the property that is. Um, being proposed to, uh, with this development.
Thank you, Mr. Okay.
That's it, I guess.
Okay.
I just think the, I think it's. Think the, for the size of the lot, 12 units is just too big. Thank you.
Uh, thanks. Um, it's always good to have a historical perspective. Rich, do you, uh? Have an answer to the question statement about the pre-existing manhole drainage from 1997?
Uh, well, I, I didn't know. Yeah, I mean, I didn't know the date, but the, um. The manhole that, that shows on, on the plans that are presented, it also. Uh, is pretty clear on our aerial information. Um, that is a, um. You know, a, a hub, a hub for a couple of lines, one coming in from Holly. One coming in from Oak. And that all heads, like I think, I, I think I noted before due to that, the rear part of that doctor's office. Um, a little further south from this parcel and the, the next parcel over. That, that drain line shows on their plans and, and, uh, the proposal is to not touch that line at all. Not make any direct connections to that line or anything like that. So. That's, you know, it's, it's clear on the plans where that line.
Great, thank you, Rich. Um, we have two other people with their hands raised. Uh, Gene Bowen.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm Gene Bowen. I live at 87 Oak Street and, um, next door to Mr. Ed Kimerline and. Couple of houses up from, um, Jim Vasquez. And I am appreciative of the history that. Both of them have testified to. But first I want to say thank you to you all for being here for, you do this month after month and so late. Um, I also appreciate, no one else seems to have mentioned, I appreciate very much that. Uh, this development will include three affordable units. And disappointed that Magnolia is not included in any affordable units. Uh, you might have seen the Pro Joe column today took, took a shot at planning and zoning boards around the state. Um, for. Being the arbiter of, you know, discouraging affordable housing. And I don't think that's necessarily true in South Kingstown. Um, so I'm a proponent of affordable housing and, and welcome it as neighbors.
Thank you. Clearly the Pro Joe didn't ask us for our opinion.
No. Um, I, I, Mr. Kimerline had sent you pictures and he just forwarded those to me and I had to chuckle because. Uh, the what, the, the shed with the orange door is my, is my shed on my property. I sent, um. Rich last September, I believe I sent Rich photographs of the flood that happened, uh, when the storm hit. We had a, a great storm in September. I had, um, one other major flood during the, I think it was 2010. Um, I have lived in this house for probably 13 years. I think I'm coming up on 13th anniversary. And it's surrounded, the property is surrounded by beautiful, lush, tall, healthy arborvitie. And I really wa- I really take care of them. Um, I have replaced them. I've trimmed them. I've cut them back and I, I certainly want to see them stay healthy. Uh, as they border and provide me with a great deal of privacy. Um, I too share the concerns, um, that Ed shared about the drainage. Uh, you know, the, the proposal. The property right now seems, appears to be a sponge for much of the water that comes from the north or from. Where, wherever it's coming from. And this development will displace. Uh, the water is my concern and cause greater flooding. The drainage pond behind my home. Doesn't appear to be deep enough to capture what would be an overflow. We're not talking 100 year storms. We had a storm last September that. Didn't make, meet that mark. So, uh, clearly we have, uh, increased rain and concerns about flooding. I know you've talked a great deal about it already in previous, with previous callers, but I want to reinforce that I have had. Um, a number of floods and don't want to, I don't want that to worsen.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I, I'd spoken to Ms. Bowen. A little while ago and, uh, was curious. I had asked her if she was, I, I would like to ask her if she was able to get in touch with Rosemary.
I did. Yes, I did. I texted her and she thanked me for sending you your way, her your way. So she has your phone number.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, everybody.
So do we have Rosemary back? I see that she's been promoted again, but it looks as though she is still muted. Rosemary, can you access your microphone?
I wonder, I'm, I'm chair, I'm going to try to promote her to panelist, see if it resolves the issue.
Right.
And you, oh, she's it will not allow me to promote her to panelist.
It doesn't look as though she's muted though in the attendees list. All right, well, perhaps you can, uh, go with Plan A and reach out to her through the office and have a conversation tomorrow.
Yes, Rosemary, if you can hear me, um, please give a call in the office tomorrow or shoot me an email. I'm happy to help you out.
All right, um, at this point, I think we have asked for some additional information, um, clarification on, um, issues related to open space, drainage, lot lines, existing trees. Is there anything else that we need going forward from this applicant? And then perhaps a motion to continue this to our February meeting. I believe we have until March seventeenth to act on this project.
Maria, if, if possible, um, I'd like to know how the other board members feel as far as relying on the porous pavement, if, whether they're comfortable with that. I mean, if the majority is comfortable with it, so be it. But if the majority has concerns, um, for as far as relying on the porous pavement, it would be good to know now so that Josh can revise the drainage plan for, uh, the next submission.
Given your question about that, yeah, Joe, given your question about that and Rich's comment about that, I, I also would be interested in seeing, um, how that would perform without the porous pavement.
Uh, Robin? Or Susan? Susan, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I'm, so I, I agree that they do require a lot of maintenance and that they're, they're not going to be working unless there being what vacuums, all, all types of maintenance. So if that is part of the calculation, then that is certainly a risk.
Paul.
I, I thought that I think overall, based on the renderings and everything in front of this, I, I, I like the design. I like the concept. I'm still very much concerned about the drainage. Um, you know, I, I, I'm sure there are test pits. I think Rich said he hadn't had a chance to look at the data yet. Um, I think it would be, it would be useful. The, the soil mapping from NRCS shows this is a very poorly drained wall pole soil. Um, and, and of course, obviously, you know, local, uh, test pit would, would either confirm or, um, whatever the opposite of confirm is. But yeah, I think, uh, I, I think I definitely want to know more about the drainage.
Thanks, Paul. Robin? Susan?
All right, I just want to agree. I think, um, Joe's point was really on target and I think it's a really great idea that we just investigate this with, with, if it were a non-porous pavement, just to make sure that it's designed well enough to manage the stormwater. I think that was a great point, Joe.
Thanks, Susan. Anyone else? Um, Mike? Oh, go ahead, Josh.
Sorry, this is Josh. Um, I have no problem looking into these particular calculations. Um, I'm a little confused or maybe, I, I don't know, at Master Plan, we uh, presented the overall concept on what we were trying to do with these LID techniques. And I got to be honest, uh, unless some of the members are different, this was a welcomed idea. Um, as long as we could support it with our design and I'm just a little confused. Uh, like we're going back in a different direction than what I thought was something that we had a understanding on. That's all.
Uh, thank you, um, Josh. I agree with you. Um, porous, uh, porous pavement and porous pavers have been used for many, many years now. Um, it is definitely, um, better for the environment. I think that we need to be embracing, um, this kind of overture from an applicant. Um, as I said before, there is maintenance, um, for everything that you do. Um, I think if anybody looks and does any research on, on porous pavers as well as porous pavement and given the fact that this area as a whole is, um, very heavily paved, um, particularly as you head toward, um, Dale Carlia. I think we need to do whatever we can to use low-impact design, LID techniques that Josh referred to. Um, and to, uh, start to incorporate them whenever possible.
I think if I can.
And it's not, it's not to say, this is, this is Josh again. It's not to say that, uh, the maintenance should be overlooked or the amount of, or what would be involved to, um, give this system sustainability. Uh, we recognize that and one of the initial conversations that we had with the owner and applicant here was to that point that we are going to propose these elements for some of the reasons, Maria, that you mentioned and for some of the reasons that I discussed. But there will be a commitment to maintenance. Um, and in addition, as a designer, we looked at these sites and in not all cases do these techniques make sense. Um, or, or in not all cases are they, are they feasible because of constraints? In this case, I just want to, I just say, because of the elevation and topography and the slopes that, uh, are in those driveways, there's, there's not a lot of slope to them necessarily. Uh, the flatter areas work better for porous pavement. The in-situ ground conditions with the gravelly sand subsoil work well for these situations. So there was a little bit of a, a selection process to basically allow us to be comfortable as designers to design it. And again, the, uh, owner and applicant here had, uh, had been aware of what the prescribed maintenance would be and, um, you know, understood after an explanation what would be involved and, and how that would be, uh, obviously mandatory and essential for these things to perform. So just want to put that out there as well.
Think, thanks, Josh. And the other Josh?
Josh Daily here. Um, I think, as I understood Joe's point and why I agreed with it, was not to, uh, discourage the use of porous pavers or to, you know, question, um, uh, that decision or try and reverse that decision. I think it was more, as Joe raised, that it requires the specific maintenance. Hopefully that will happen, but under saying that that sometimes doesn't happen and therefore the efficacy is not what it, what it is promised to be. I think what Joe was saying is, let's look at it. Is, does it require porous pavers to, to cross the threshold, right? Or, or would it work without porous pavers? I think that's I, what I understood Joe saying. He said more articulately, but, but I think that's my understanding is just to see that it doesn't require porous pavement in, in order to, um, deal with the.
And, uh, Josh, that's exactly right. I mean, what's being proposed now, this needs a very, um, dedicated maintenance plan in order to not have negative impacts to the neighbors. And everything requires maintenance. But the maintenance required for a retention basis versus the maintenance that's required for, um, the pavement is completely different. I mean, this would require vacuuming and cleaning and making sure there's no sand and salt. And the first time that it doesn't get vacuumed, we start having impacts to the neighbors. And that's what I'm trying to avoid. Um, I'm all for porous pavement, but not when that is used to meet the minimum requirements and that, uh, the maintenance would cause, uh, lack of maintenance cause impact. So yeah, porous pavement, that's great. But show us that even when that gets clogged or if that's not vacuumed, that you're not going to have impacts to the neighbors. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
Understood, Joe and Josh. Um, if there are another comments from plenty board members, there is one hand, I believe, that's new. Uh, Raymond and Barbara Lima.
Yes, hello again. Um, I may have, uh, read the material incorrectly and I may have missed some discussions about this earlier. And I may be being too simplistic also, but I, I read that the applicant is looking for a waiver. Um, it's supposed to be fifty feet between the buildings and the applicant's plan only calls for twenty feet, twenty-five and thirty-four feet. And in the request for the waiver, he's, it stated there is no way to position buildings on the property in order to meet the fifty-foot setback requirement. My comment is very, very simple. I mean, the way to accomplish that is to have fewer buildings.
Uh, thank you. Jamie, would you like to respond to that? Because I know that that was discussed at Master Plan.
Again, Madam Chair, the applicant, uh, from a regulatory stance was allowed a certain particular density of the nature and narrowness of the lot, uh, led him down a path to request a waiver from the planning board, uh, which is within your jurisdiction, uh, to do, uh, as spelled out in the regulations and particular scenarios, uh, primarily for, uh, good planning as it relates to the developability of a particular lot. And, and that's why the applicant chose to propose this particular development layout. And any development in most instances, and you've seen it tonight, an applicant could completely comply with the regulations without requiring any waivers. You know, developer could have put two single-family homes here and not asked for any waivers. Uh, but they chose to go down this permitting path, which is allowed under the regulations. And it's within the jurisdiction of the planning board to evaluate the request for waiver. So yes, the, the comment that they could reduce the overall density and perhaps meet the required setbacks is true, uh, but the applicant is entitled to request a waiver and relief from the planning board also.
Wouldn't that also solve a lot of the water problems if we had fewer buildings and fewer density, I guess, would you say? I'm not going to argue. I mean, if you've had a long night and good heavens, you deserve to get out of here soon. But I just, I was very taken aback by the comment that there's no way to do it. When in fact, there is a way to do it and it may solve multiple problems. That's all that I ask that you possibly consider in the future.
Uh, thank you. We, we, we certainly understand your comment and your perspective and, um, that, um, has been brought up in the past many times in other developments. And generally the response is that would not be financially viable. And then they continue to go forward with their plan. It is also noteworthy that any applicant can submit a different type of, um, plan called a comprehensive permit in which they, um, have a twenty-five percent requirement for affordable housing. Um, we have inclusionary zoning, which allows for twenty percent. Um, and for that extra five percent, they can ask for significant, um, changes or waivers from the standards. Um, so this is not that type of a permit and it, we're trying to find a fine balance between the two and allow the applicant use of their property, allow to allow, um, uh, affordable units. This applicant has actually, um, given us or agreed to an additional unit beyond what they were required to do. So, um, we're now at the preliminary stage and um, want, want to move forward and can continue our in-depth conversation with the details, the engineering-type details that are required at preliminary. And the preliminary is a misnomer. It's actually the final stage as far as the public is concerned. Um, whereas conceptual master plan was the initial stage of reviews.
And Madam Chair, to resolve the fifty foot, the applicant would have the choice to push the duplexes together and do a fourplex, negating the need for the separating distance, but it'd be a much, uh, bulkier building uh, with less appearance of openness as it relates to them trying to accomplish a more single-family uh, style development from an appearance standpoint, even though they are proposed to be duplexed.
Thank you, Jamie, uh, as we are all well, well aware. Um, would someone like to make a motion to continue this item to our February meeting?
Make that motion.
Um, we have a motion, we have a motion from Josh to continue the public hearing to our February twenty-second meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Joe. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think Jamie, you're well aware of the information that the board is looking for.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm sure Mr. Rosen will reach out to our department.
Yes. Thank you. Our next agenda item. Public hearing change to a previously approved plan, major subdivision, flexible design residential project, South County Trail subdivision. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
I'm Mr. Cafrey, you are, uh, you're unmuted. Are you associated with this application?
Uh, yes, Jeff Cafrey with the law firm of Resnick and Cafrey, uh, here on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Mr. Cafrey, hold on one second while, while I promote you to panelists. Thank you.
Are we all set now?
Yes, please proceed.
Sure. Uh, once again, Jeff Cafrey, uh, with the law firm of Resnick and Cafrey, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, Gashi Balashe. Uh, as was indicated, um, we're here seeking a modification uh, to the final plan approval to allow for the current location of a driveway, which presently encroaches upon a no-cut buffer zone, which was part of the South County Trail subdivision. It was a sixteen lot subdivision, which was approved by this, uh, by this board, lots one through seven. And also lots eleven through sixteen contained a fifty-foot no-cut buffer zone at the front of the property. Uh, the lot in question, which is lot number fifteen, uh, was actually the site of the original farmhouse. Um, and was also the site where the developer, the original developer, uh, five A builders stored his fill-in construction materials. I mention this because at the time the lot was purchased by the applicant, uh, it essentially was cleared for a majority of the frontage. And, and due to that fact, when the applicant submitted his building plans, uh, he submitted plans with a front-loaded garage as opposed to a side-loaded garage and therefore, um, put in a driveway which would have been a straight shot to the front-loaded garage as opposed to utilizing the location as was set forth on the original plans, uh, prepared by Dupree Engineering. So as a result of his inadvertent placement of the driveway, uh, we have encroached upon the no-cut buffer zone. And we're here tonight just basically seeking approval of the, uh, planning board so that we can amend the final decision to allow the current location of the driveway.
And Mr. Cafrey, can you explain to the board and the members of the public how this will be, uh, rectified, mitigated?
Um, well, basically the, the no-cut, uh, dimensions will be essentially the same. The only difference being is we're relocating the, uh, the driveway, uh, to the north approximately fifty feet. The, um, it, it, the area to the south of the proposed existing driveway, um, is, is essentially a lawn at this point in time. And the area to the north is, um, is natural vegetation. So it would be our proposal essentially to leave it the way it is and just allow the property to be restored to its former condition.
And, and I'm assuming that, um, there would be monumentation that would go along with this. And, and I'm assuming that there would be monumentation that would go along with this as is the norm? So that it would be well delineated and understood?
That's correct. I understand that was a requirement of the, of the conservation commission as well.
Jamie, comments from planning? Kind of an unusual situation.
Yes, and I think Mr. Cafrey did a reasonable job stating what occurred. I mean, one additional thing is the actual application submitted to the public service department with the driveway permit referenced the originally approved driveway. So the inadvertent placement of the driveway was actually not part of the original application or construction of the driveway in its proper location. That's the only piece of missing information, but with regards to his other statements, I have no issues with those. Your comment with regards to monumentation, the original approval required the monumentation of that no cut buffer as well as the open space. It's our understanding that the property owner was signed off on this application, remove those property boundaries. So in the proposed conditions of approval, we are recommending that the mentation be placed there. We use the term wood or granite. That is subject to the discretion of the planning board. But I'm sure a member will ask, does staff have a preference or recommendation based on the removal by the present landowner? And similar to Curtis Corner, the village at Curtis Corner, you're concerned about the longevity of the markers. It will be staff recommendation that those be in the form of granite or stone.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions, comments from board members? Susan.
Hi. So I drove on Makela Court and I saw the open space, no cut buffers along the roadway are fairly mature trees and shrubs along the roadway. It's, it's actually very attractive. Is there a potential to install native trees and shrubbery in this space? Because I think just leaving the lawn to grow long, you'll, you may end up with knotweed and any other kind of invasives moving in. And I think no one wants to live with a weedy lot out front. So instead of just letting the lawn grow long and grow what may, could we create a more formal planting plan for some natives? And have the developer take care of that because it was their error that has caused this problem.
Well, unfortunately, the developer doesn't have any rights to the property any longer. So anything that would be done on the property would have to be done by the property owner and with their acquiescence. I don't know if they're present at the hearing or not.
Thoughts on how this would relate to this, this type of request would, would relate to the, what we have in front of us? Either Jamie or Amy?
Yep. Madam Chair, I think I, I'll try to address Susan's question. The area where the existing driveway was, the driveway was supposed to be, in essence, was an area that was de-vegetated with the preliminary construction of the development. The area that the driveway ended up being in was also not a forested area. The area immediately north of the existing driveway as it was installed is vegetated. There is some appearance that someone had trimmed or cut some of the lower woody growth, maybe a half inch caliber and smaller. The potential, the owners have been advised that that is contrary to the no cut buffer. But no one else within this development was required or stipulated in the original proposal to re-vegetate any area other than leave it in its remaining state. Perhaps to Susan's point, even though it's a no cut buffer that is opposed to not be touched and grow back in its natural state, you may want to consider allowing the administrative officer to allow a native planting plan, which would consist of plants, shrubs and deciduous canopy to be proposed and installed in that area, which then will further develop into a more natural state. But there's no one in this development who was required to re-vegetate an existing area that was not vegetated.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yeah, in, in furtherance of what, of what Jamie was saying, you know, at the time that the lot was acquired by the applicant, the area, the no cut zone, which is to the south of the existing driveway, had essentially been cleared at that point in time. And I believe it probably was even cleared at the time that the, that the easement or the no cut restriction was put on the property in 2017. So it'd been in that state for quite some time. And now it's something that was done by the applicant.
Yeah, I would add one more thing to that. Susan, at this, this area where the driveway is now and where it was supposed to be and where the house is, this was where the original house was for that property, I believe. So that's why it was always sort of cleared. It wasn't cleared during construction or anything like that. So it became a place where they stored materials through construction, but it was always cleared at that.
That's correct.
So I guess I just want to be clear that because we can't enforce a planting plan, then we simply won't have a no cut, we'll just lose that much no cut space because we can't enforce it and it's going to just be long lawn. It's not going to be a natural wildlife habitat or, or space. It'll just be grow what may. And we've lost this section of, of, of natural space.
Jamie?
I would suggest, I would, yep, this is Amy Goins. I would suggest in a separate motion, if the board agrees, direct the administrative officer to look into this and report back to the planning board at the next meeting because it's related to the request for the board tonight. But it's really a separate issue. And as attorney Cafrey said, this involves the homeowner and not the developer.
Is the homeowner, is the homeowner here tonight who would be able to talk with us about this? Is Michelle in the audience, the homeowner with her hand up?
There, there is a Michelle.
Michelle, if you can.
Yeah, Stephen and I are both here. Can you hear us?
Yes, could you just state your name for the record, please?
I'm Michelle Weston.
Steve Stringel.
Thank you. Could you clarify the question that Susan had?
Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
So we have a stretch in front of your home, which now has no vegetation, but it should be a no, a no cut, vegetated, you know, small wooded space or some sort of natural habitat. How would you feel about installing some native shrubs or small trees into that space to allow it to become more like the rest of the no cut space along your roadway?
We, my husband and I actually talked about putting trees in because there is nothing there. I, we are not against putting in trees or plants to help with that no cut. A couple of things that I wanted to point out about, if the driveway did have to be changed, you would have to take down more trees though, or on the side of the house to put the driveway where it should be. And you would also be going over our underground power lines. So we are like hoping that you will decide to leave the driveway where it is. Those are two concerns that we had, taking down more trees. We don't have that many as it is. And then also covering power lines that are underground. We did remove no, no space markers that were in the front on that side because they said no space. And there's a difference between no space and no cut, or open space. I'm sorry.
Um, a, a, as you can see, we are heading in the direction of not requiring the driveway to be changed, but want to try to obviously mitigate the situation. Perhaps allowing a planting, as Jamie suggested, a naturalized planting and then having appropriate monumentation so that it remains that way, both for you and for any future owners of the property.
I think that we would be in agreeance to putting in plants and vegetation. Yes.
Great. Thank you. Paul?
A question for Jamie. So we just heard that open space monuments were removed. Is there open space here in this development that should be delineated there? Do those need to be replaced as well as the no cut markers or?
No, it's, Paul, it's my understanding that the open space markers remain in place of the no cut buffer monument.
Thank you.
We do have no space or open space on our north side of our house and those markers are still in place. We just were not in agreeance that no space markers are in the front yard because that's a no cut. I keep, I'm sorry, open spaces.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry, the terminology.
Madam Chair, I might be able to provide some explanation really quick.
Thank you, Jay.
This was a flexible design residential project and as you, as you know, it requires perimeter open space. So what you see on the plan here with the straight hatching is the open space that surrounds the lots that were created. In addition to that open space, the no cut buffers were established on private property. And the intent was to install monumentation corners to delineate where those were. I believe in our subdivision regulations, we have a specification in the plan, in the regs that dictates how open space markers are to be installed, what they're to consist of and what they look like. Most likely, I would imagine that the same open space markers were just used because we don't have an no cut buffer monument. We just have open space buffer monuments.
I see. All right, that's helpful.
That creates a problem with our neighbors.
Any additional comments from board members? Amy, can you tell us, we still, we have at least one person with their hand raised, which we will get to in a moment. As far as a motion, would we be able to require as a condition, in addition to the monumentation, that the vegetation as proposed by Jamie be installed as a condition?
Um, I'm not so sure it would be appropriate to include that as a condition because the, this motion was requested by the developer. And then again, the monumentation and the vegetation is on a lot that the developer doesn't have psych control over anymore. So I would suggest addressing that and directing the administrative officer to address that in a separate motion.
Yep. Madam Chair, to legal counsel's point, you could perhaps entertain either a motion to this or as counsel has said, a separate motion that would allow landowner to submit a plan to vegetate the no cut area upon review and approval of a native planting plan prepared by a registered landscape architect. But if no plan is submitted and approved, the area shall remain in its native state and not be mowed.
Well, it certainly makes sense to have two separate motions for Amy's suggestion.
So as part of a project review member, you have a recommendation and proposed condition of approval.
Yes, we do have a, a hand raised. Alex Petrucci? Jay, could you?
Alec, there you go.
Can you guys hear me now?
We can.
Okay. I just want to make it clear that like Rich told you in the meeting, that when I purchased that property, that area that was in question was a complete lawn. It was part of the old house. There was no vegetation there. There was nothing there. It was just a big, that's why we stored our, our material there. When I designed that subdivision, I designed it with the idea of having a no buff, no cut buffer in front of all those lots to make the houses look more country. And the planning board thought it was a great idea and we came up with that design. That particular lot that we're talking about was purchased by another developer to build an affordable house that he was going to build. So I sold him the lot and when he submitted the drawings to the town of South Kingston in the building department, the driveway was in the right place. When the, when it got built, it was realized that the driveway wasn't going to work the way they had it. So they built, they did what they did, which they did a very nice job, I must say. What I'm trying to say is that the area that we're talking about, the non-cut area, will weed up, will grow up. And as the applicant, as the property owner said, that she would like to have some trees there. I would even go further than I would have my, my people go out there and put the no cut buffer, no cut bounds in that are missing in that area. I'll have Pete go out there like I had him doing the rest of the subdivision and add those to it just to make everybody comfortable.
Thank you. That's a generous offer as long as it, you know, complies with whatever standards need to be met. Paul?
Yeah, I just, because these were removed once, I think they do need to be granted. I know that is an option in the motion, but I just want to be clear about that. I want these to be granted.
Agreed.
The other ones weren't granted. They were all, at that time they were steel poles with pressured trees four feet in the ground with all engraved. And that's what's in the whole project. So I don't know why you'd want to make just that particular one different.
Because they've been removed once. That's my point.
If the property owner has indicated the reason why they did it, and I'm sure that they would acknowledge that if they were properly marked, that they would not remove them in this particular instance.
It doesn't change my opinion. Thank you.
All right. We have another hand raised, but I'd like to get to some resolution. It is now almost 11 o'clock. We still have another public hearing on our agenda, which we may or may not get to at this point. So if anybody else is going to speak, could you please be brief and to the point? Okay, I see a hand just went down. Alex, do you have anything? Your hand is back up or did you not lower it in the first place? Do you have anything else to add?
Am I shut off now?
You're speaking and we can hear you, but if you have anything to add, please do so now.
No, I'm all set. I've just said that, as I said before, I opted to go out there and put those bounds that belong in that subdivision in that area. And I will have my people do it and will match all the rest of them. And Richard can go out there and inspect it after Pete puts them in.
Uh, thank you. Michelle, you have your hand raised? Something?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We have the open space markers that were taken out. They're inside our garage. And we have a problem with our neighbor across the street that insists like, he knows our property better than us. He knows where our open space is compared to our no cut.
He knows where our open space is compared to our no cut. And that's the only issue we have is because he, he doesn't live on the other side of the street, it shouldn't bother him, but he, it bothers him for some reason, and that's, you know, part of the issue is that the terminology, open space in the street means that anybody can walk through that area where no cut is our property, and just anybody can't walk on, um, no cut. It's not a common area, yeah.
I think that the suggestion that Jamie made is a good one, and if you would be willing to add plantings, it would make a lot of sense. I think that the board is likely to want to have that monumentation. It's just a matter of being specific as it relates to the motion. So if we, if there are no further comments from board members, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I actually have a quick question.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Petrucci offered to come out and put in some monuments. Are those no cut monuments or are those open space monuments? And will we take him up on that offer, or instead put in granite markers that we had talked about also? Like, have we made a decision? I don't know which kind Mr. Petrucci was planning to put in. Yeah, I don't feel, I don't feel resolution here.
I believe he said that.
Madam Chair, if I, if I can?
Go ahead, Jamie.
So again, the recommendation to use stone is a more permanent in nature. But they were the typical six by six granite post, or whether you decided to allow the applicant to install the kind of block that you approved, a granite block or, or stone block that you approved for the village at Curtis Corner could be appropriate. The primary thing is monumentation to denote the boundaries of the no cut buffer. Whether they have a tag on them that says open space or no cut, I think to me is indifferent. From my perspective and the planning board's perspective, monumentation delineating the corners of what the area is where nothing is supposed to happen. No cutting, no maintenance, no mulching, it is a no cut, no disturbed area. So I'm flexible with regards to a granite post or stone block. But again, it's got to be the dimensions that the planning board approved at Village at Curtis Corner, or a simple six by six granite post. Mr. Petrucci made potentially a generous offer. Mr. Petrucci does not have permission to enter onto the property. He could easily do the ones on the street line, but without the permission of the landowner the internal markers, which I believe would be for only the landowner can grant permission to have those installed.
Yes, I, I think we, we understand that. Other questions or comments? Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
When Jamie just mentioned the landowner granting permission, I noticed that Michelle's hand went back up, I don't know if that was in response to that. I don't know if we want to.
Um, Michelle, do you have a quick response to this required condition?
Steve.
This is, this is Steve. We do support Mr. Petrucci coming in onboard. We prefer not to have the six by six giant granite. What we had before was only four by four posts, and that was more reasonable, but he does have permission to come in.
Thank you. Thoughts, comments? Yes, motion from Paul to close the public hearing, do we have a second? Second from Joe, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. What is the board's pleasure? We have a motion that begins in our staff comments on page number three. And you'll see that under the final conditions of approval, there is highlighted wood or granite. So some specificity would be important here, and there is also a number two, if there are any other conditions.
Uh, just one comment about the granite, I had forgotten what we talked about at Curtis Corner. I think immovable blocks, they don't necessarily have to be concrete posts, granite posts set in the ground. I think we talked about blocks at Curtis Corner, something that, that can't be moved. That I don't think they, they need to say open space, or they don't need to say anything, right, Jamie? They just need to be shown on a plan somewhere, or?
They're in essence boundary markers delineating the space. So a- again, I think we used a four by two by two minimum sized stone or a piece of granite for Village at Curtis Corner, potentially more aesthetically pleasing, low profile, will fit into the escape as an option to a post. But again, it would take two or three or four people to move that, it would considerable effort to move that.
That makes a lot of sense, Jamie. Paul, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I think we just need to change the language, say granite post or granite block of whatever those dimensions are that you just said. Two by two by four, was that right?
Yes.
Any other thoughts? Would someone like to make the motion?
I can make that motion.
The South Kingston Planning Board hereby approves the proposed major change to the previously approved plan for the South County Trail Subdivision Flexible Residential Design Project. The planning board hereby approves the placement of the driveway in the center of Lot 52 and delineating the area to the north and south of the driveway as no cut buffers extending 50 foot into the property from the edge of the right of way located at 31 McKella Court. Gashi, ooh, I haven't done, Donald L. Shee, applicant Stephen Stringham and Michelle West, owner. The approval is based upon a plan entitled As Built Proposed Plan Assessors Plan 21, Lot 52, recorded lot 15, 31 McKella Court, South Kingston, Rhode Island, dated January 10th, 2022, prepared by Ocean State Planists, Inc., 1255 Oakland Ave, Cranston, Rhode Island, 02920. This approval is based on the following findings of fact and condition of approval. Findings of fact A through H and condition of approval one, with it being modified to reflect the limitation to be either a grand block or a grant post of the dimensions that we discussed.
Thank you, Joe, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Paul, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Jamie, do you have suggestions for language for a second motion relating to the planting? If, if the board is so inclined.
Um, madam chair, that the landowner may submit a plan showing vegetation of, of vegeta-, sorry, the landowner may sit a plant, start over again. The landowner may hit a plan to vegetate the no cut buffer area upon review and approval of a native planting plan prepared by a registered landscape architect. But if no plan is submitted and approved by, approved for this area, the area shall remain in a native state and not be mowed.
Um, this is Amy. Jamie, I think that language is fine. I would just ask the board member making the motion, frame it as direct the administrative officer to work with the property owner.
Good suggestion, Amy. Would someone like to make that motion?
Make that motion.
We have a motion from Paul, do we have a second? Thank you, Joe, second from Joe, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. It is now 10:59. We generally need a motion in order to continue. I might add that relative to the staff comments on this next agenda item, the staff has not had a chance to review this item as they did not receive it until, Jamie? Less than a week ago, something like that?
Uh, Tuesday, I'm sorry, this is Jay Parker, not Jamie Rabbit. We received it on Tuesday morning, about a week ago.
Thoughts from board members, we will, will need a motion to continue this meeting past 11 o'clock. Um, the options that we have for this and the item following this would be to continue it to a specific date. We could allow the applicant to give a very brief overview and continue it. So what is the board's pleasure?
Maria, I'd make the motion that we actually listened, they waited this long, but we limit it to no more than 40 or 45 minutes, give them 20 or 25 minutes to the applicant, and no more than 20 minutes to neighboring property owners, and then if it's still going on, continue to the next meeting.
I think, Joe, if, if the board, if it's the consensus of the board to do that before we get into it, rather than making the last agenda item wait until midnight, why don't we figure out when we're going to deal with the last agenda item?
Jamie, what does our schedule look like? I, I think going for 45 minutes plus another agenda item is really pushing the limits of everyone's ability to concentrate and.
Correct, yeah, you have two, three items remaining on your agenda. Again, that's the public hearing for Plant Based. You have an extension request from Hillside Commons, you have a proposed draft.
CA, that was already approved in the.
Then you have a request for reduction in performance bond. Major subdivision staff has prepared a motion for your consideration on that item. You also may have representatives from Plant Based when you bring them into the meeting, giving the hour. Perhaps want to do a very brief abridged introduction to their project and would potentially welcome you continuing this.
Yes, how does the board feel about, we have a a motion prepared by staff for the request for the reduction in performance bond? If we tackle that issue first, since it appears that there is agreement between DPS and planning staff and the applicant, and then have a very brief introduction from the Plant Based Compassion Care. Thoughts?
Yeah, let's keep going.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
I'm sorry, yes, I moved that we continue for another 45, well, 45 minutes to an hour.
Oh. Susan?
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Paul, we have a second from Susan, is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye. A little late there, Josh, it is getting late. Tomorrow morning will be challenging for all of us. Motion carries. So let's go to the request for reduction in performance bonds, Jamie, can you give us an update?
Yep, madam chair, we do have a request as part of the final review submitted by 5A Builders and Alex Petrucci regarding the bond reduction and the correspondence that we sent to the planning board. The original of development surety as proposed by the pre-engineering was 1.22 million. And in consultation with public service, being Rich Bourbonase and John Shock, recommending that that be reduced to $514,205.14214.62. The motion as drafted in consultation with council is slightly modified from what you have before you, and I'll read that. The South Kingston Planning Board hereby reduces the previously established performance bond from 1.22943 to 514214.62. Said financial security must be submitted and received to the satisfaction of the town's finance director prior to recording of the final plan for the Village at Curtis Corner, major subdivision, comprehensive permit project. Form of the financial security shall be completed in consultation with the planning director and the town's legal counsel. I did receive correspondence from 5A's legal council this afternoon, actually, I should say late this evening. I'm just looking for that. Please bear with me, this as quick as possible. Mr. Mike Resnick submitted a email directed to Amy Goins, James Rabbit, and Jason Parker. I have discussed with my client the agenda item this evening relative to the bond reduction request for Curtis Corner. We understand that a motion has been prepared to present to the planning permission relative to the DPW Director John Shock's recommendation that the bond amount include the sewer system as well as the road. As you know, we object to this recommendation based upon approval obtained by the DPW Director as well as the town engineer. That said, my client will post the bond should the planning board accept the motion before it based on Mr. Shock's recommendation. However, in posting the bond, my client expressly presses his objections to the same and reserves his rights relative to the same. We are of the opinion that the position that failing to reduce the bond amount to capture the scope of work, the sewer system and road is an unreasonable regulation on a comprehensive LMI development, and that the town should be estoppled from acquiring said work to be included in the bond. As this work was accepted by the town by and through its town engineer and DPW director, I ask that this correspondence be read into the record and be made part of the record in order that my client can reserve his rights relative to the instant objection. Thanks, Michael Resnick.
Jamie, I'm not sure that I actually really understand the letter. It sounds as though they're protesting, but they're agreeing to the reduction of the bond, so.
This is Amy Goins, that's exactly right, Maria, that's the stance. With that said, I have no concerns advising the board to go ahead and set the bond there, they've agreed to it.
Thanks, Amy. Comments from board members? Paul?
I will make that motion as read by Mr. Rabbit.
Thank you, Paul has made the amended motion, is there a second?
You do have Alex with his hand raised in the audience, sorry, no, there's a motion.
Why don't we have a second, and then during the discussion, we'll allow Mr. Petrucci. Thank you, Joe, second from Joe. Further discussion, Mr. Petrucci? Can you make it as brief as possible, it is after 11 PM? You're muted.
His hand might have been left raised up from last discussion.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just as tired of you guys, I just lead on my mouse, I'm all set with you guys.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Next agenda item, Plant Based Compassion Care, Inc. Please be aware of the late hour, this is obviously going to be an item that is continued, and since it is development plan review, there is no timeframe associated with this. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Madam Chair, we do have Attorney James Callahan and the. Madam Chair, we do have Attorney James Callahan and the attendees list representing.
They're in process of being, they're coming in as pan- as panelists at the moment.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. How are you tonight?
Uh, somewhat tired, but willing to hear you for a brief period of time. Um, you have submitted quite an extensive, um, uh, notebook. I might add that it isn't, the copies are not double-sided and they could have been, which would have been better for the environment and made for a smaller packet, but please continue.
Understood. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. We will, uh, move as, uh, exponentially as possible. James Callahan of Callahan and Callahan. Uh, three Brown Street in Whitford here tonight representing plant-based compassionate care and application for development plan review and advisor for special use permit at seventy-one Old Tower Hill Road. This is the site right behind DeAngelo's. And I think formerly the Pizza Hut on Tower Hill Road. It's across the street from Bagels. It's a Tower Hill Road uh, by address, but it's on Pershing by driveway. Um, the property presents as a residence, um, like a home almost. Um, we have a number of witnesses here for you tonight for this, uh, medical marijuana retail facility. I know your board has addressed a number of these in, uh, close proximity, but not within the uh, footage, uh, limit. Um, we have Blake Costa will describe the operations, patient base and security. John Chevlin of Parry Corp. discussed the traffic impact study, Ed Mental, the land use, Paul Carlson, the site plan and Catherine Weaver will describe planting, buffering and, uh, the landscape. Uh, as Ms. Mack mentioned, we did provide a significant, uh, supplement material last week. We wish that a little bit earlier, but I think it is a, a very nicely presented, uh, package, except for the two-sided aspect. Um, this, uh, applicant has actually won the lottery for South County. That's why we're here for you tonight. Um, that was the lottery connected by Department of Business Regulation. So as you probably know, this is a retail facility with operations akin to a bank or a jewelry store or a small, uh, one-product pharmacy. And we will get into the patient base, the traffic and how this will all fit in this area, uh, to your satisfaction, we hope. So with that, um, I'd like to ask Blake Costa to be, uh, brought in as a panelist to give an overview of the operations and the plans he has going forward with his team.
Thank you, James. I'm on. Uh, Chairperson Mack and board members, thank you for this extension. Uh, my name's Blake Costa of Five A Court in Rhode Island. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Plant-Based Compassionate Care. Um, as you all are aware, we have been awarded a conditional license by the state of Rhode Island to operate a medical marijuana compassion center at seventy-one Old Tower Hill Road. Um, I have been the point person for this application. I am responsible for the single-sided print and I apologize. Um, for that, uh, however, you know, we've worked very hard to put together this comprehensive package. As we'll discuss and, uh, paint out, we've taken steps to minimize our impact on the community and be, um, efficient operators. Our facility is designed for medical patients. These are, these are individuals that, um, have debilitating, debilitating conditions as outlined by the Department of Health. They have to go and receive a medical cannabis patient card from the Department of Health in order to enter our facility and to purchase, purchase product. Um, at no point will individuals from the general public be able to walk in without such identifications. Um, we're providing help to people who are, you know, not only, um, have debilitating conditions, but are terminal. Um, many who reside in South County and have lacked access to this type of medicine due to the, there only being three compassion centers in this state. Um, I think it's important to outline my credentials. I was not only an operator, but, um, a member of this team. Uh, a big aspect of this business is safety and security. Um, I spent fifteen years in the military. About five years in the Marine Corps. I served on the embassy program, securing embassies in Afghanistan, Pakistan, Italy. I've worked with the White House on various security assignments throughout Europe. Um, I have an extensive security background, which I brought over into the cannabis sector and have been very successful in, as I'll outline today, tonight. Um, additionally, I worked in the medical field, serving in the Rhode Island Army National Guard as a medic in various roles and leadership roles. Uh, most recently supporting the COVID nineteen pandemic activation. Uh, I worked with the National Guard Joint Task Force Guarding as a medical officer, non-commissioned officer in charge. Um, I was responsible for the procurement and distribution of all P P E throughout the state in the early stages of, uh, COVID nineteen. Um, I bring a lot of my medical safety and security background into the cannabis space to make it safe, efficient and effective. Um, as far as our cannabis experience, um, I came up. We started four years ago with a cultivation facility in Warwick, Rhode Island. We had been very successful. Um, not only as operators to provide affordable medication to patients. We do that through, um, innovative cultivation techniques. We recycle all our water, which has a minimal impact on the community. Um, all LED lighting, low energy usage. Because we're able to cultivate cannabis at such a low price per pound, it gives our patients from Rhode Island access to affordable medicine. Through our time there, we've had, um, zero negative interactions with the community. Everything's been positive. We, uh, excel at odor mitigation and community relations. We've done various community outreach projects throughout the past four years. Additionally, I serve as the Director of Security and Safety for two additional, uh, cannabis, uh, compassion centers, one in Maine, one in Maryland, which both operate the same as this facility would. Um, we will outline those operations a little bit. I'll try to be brief. I know it's late for everyone. Um, but as far as the Ma- Maryland, the main layout, they'll be very similar in a sense that only qualified patients would come in. When they arrive, they're greeted by one of our staff members. IDs are verified. They're brought into an area. All our, um, public access areas were patient access. We had zero cannabis products on display. We use dummy packaging and visuals. All products are kept in a secured room. Um, there, they're interacting with the patient counselor while they're doing their, uh, interactions and finding out their needs. We have a team in the back that's preparing their products for distribution. Um, for the purposes of the board, I know there's a lot of questions about landscaping and, um, transporta- or, uh, traffic. So as the interoperation of the, of the board, if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those questions. I'm going to skip over that part and go into the security. Um, as far as security goes, we run a comprehensive security program. We use the same security software that the prison systems use here in Rhode Island. Um, variety of devices with minimal impact on the community. It's been proven through data that, uh, cannabis facilities increase security presence in the neighborhoods. Um, additionally, with the security, we will not have any armed guards on site. Um, we're not, you know, I know if you go to other compassion centers, you see large armed guards hanging around the sites. That's not going to be the case here. This is a place where we provide care to patients in need. Um, going into community relations, I have personally met with the Chief of Police for South Kingston and along with the Assistant Chief and the Sergeant for the Traffic Division. We've been working with the Police Department to establish, um, traffic mitigation methods, working with their division. Additionally, I'll be serving as a community liaison for plant-based compassionate care, enforcing our good neighbor policy. Our good neighbor policy will be introducing ourselves to all the neighbors, um, giving them access to appropriate communication channels in cases um, odor complaints, uh, traffic complaints, or just general, um, general interactions they would like to have with us. Additionally, we'll be offering a compassionate need program. This compassionate need program serves individuals that are, um, low income, senior citizens, sixty-five or older, veterans, permanently disabled. These individuals will, will receive, um, a greater discount than most others in order to have access to affordable medication that otherwise wouldn't be possible for them. Given that this is an insurance-backed, this is not an insurance-backed, uh, medicine. Um, as far as staff staffing goes, we have, uh, you know, a receptionist in the front. Our patient counselors, our inventory specialists. Um, and I, we'll have a staff of ten, but I need to gain time. We'll have about four staff working at the facility. Um, the operations are pretty streamlined as we outline in our traffic study. We are able to serve a patient after their first visit. So their remaining visits after their first visit and they get their initial consultation and their patient record established. From the time they check, get their ID checked, the time they exit the facility has been averaged five minutes in our Maryland and Maine location. Um, we also offer pre-order and online delivery services, cashless payments. And, um, in addition to that, we do tele- teleconsultations so an individual can consult with the patient counselor prior to arriving to their facility to understand what their needs are in order to minimize their time in the facility and mitigate a potential traffic issue. Um, I did have much more prepared to discuss tonight, but given our time constraints, I think it's important that we move on to traffic with Mr. Chevlin. Prior to moving on to that, are there any questions from the board for myself?
Questions for board members? Now, I think it's best to move on and remember that anyone that, uh, speaks for too lengthy a period of time will shorten the time for your remaining, uh, team to present. So please try to keep everyone moving.
Yes, ma'am. So John Chevlin, if you want to jump on. Mr. Parker, you seen him in the lobby?
Yes, uh, promoting him to panelist right now. Is there anybody else you'd like promoted, Blake?
Um, if you want to promote John and then I, I know there's going to be landscaping. Let's promote, uh, Paul Carl- Carlson and who's here from Topeka?
Catherine Weaver.
Yeah, if Catherine's on, you can pull her in, please. And then add Pen- Penelope. And that should be it. All right, John, you got the floor.
Evening, um, Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Shelton from Park Corporation and appreciate you hearing us tonight. I, I'll try to be brief, but I know there's a lot of, uh, that went into this traffic study. Uh, but I'll go ahead and give you a, an overview in regards to what we've done to date. So our firm was hired to go ahead and do a traffic impact analysis to take a look in regards to what the impacts would be to the surrounding roadway network from this proposed facility. Um, as been mentioned before, as you've seen in the plans, the site will have access on Pershing Avenue where there'll be a shared driveway um, for this site and also for the retail development that's in the front. Uh, there's also two other entrances or access points into these, into this, uh, lot. Uh, you have the driveway that's just further north on Pershing Avenue. Then you also have another driveway that's coming on an old Tower Hill Road um, in the north, northeast corner. Um, as part of our traffic study, you know, we looked at a few different things. Um, you know, we looked to see what the impacts were going to be on the traffic safety and also on the traffic capacity. Um, in order to do that, we started off by doing quite a bit of data collection, uh, with inventory of roadways, doing traffic counts, uh, requesting crash data. Um, so with that, we went ahead and I'll go right into what we did for the capacity analysis. You know, we took the counts we had during the peak hours. We did a weekday afternoon peak hour and we did a Saturday midday peak hour, uh, to go ahead and analyze those two conditions. Um, the conditions that we looked at were the existing conditions. Uh, so we took the council we had and we did apply a factor for COVID based on what's been accepted for other developments. Uh, for studies that we've done in Rhode Island and Massachusetts. So we did bump those up to take into account the, the traffic based on the pandemic that's, that's been ongoing. Um, we looked at the existing conditions, analyzed that, and then we looked at the future no build conditions and future build and both those conditions were, um, were projected out, uh, five years to twenty twenty-six. And when we looked at the future no build, and that is what the condition's going to be without this development being active. We took a look in regards to what the additional traffic may be on the roadway, uh, through two things, through a growth factor, which is typically obtained by looking at census data and seeing what the annual growth is. And for this case, it was point four one percent annually over the last ten years. So we went and we applied a point five percent annual increase per year in order to go ahead and get the future no build. We also take a look in regards to other developments that's occurring and one of our engineers did reach out to, uh, the town. And they did mention that the only, only developments that they knew in the area that may be happening was there are other, uh, medical marijuana dispensaries, which is, has been mentioned by Mr. Costa. You know, this site's the one that's been selected right now. So those other ones weren't into account. So we didn't, we didn't go ahead and look at any traffic being generated from any of those sites. Um, and then we went and we took a look at the future build, which takes into account the future no build traffic and the traffic that's going to be generated from this site. And that's where, you know, we went ahead and we, we looked in regards to what's the best way for the trip generation for the site. And there's you know, different methodologies, algorithms. Usually we use the I T E Trip Generation Manual, which is a manual that is developed for trips for particular types of uses. Uh, but one thing that I T does not have is any trip distribution for medical marijuana. They do have some in there, but it's for recreational purpose purposes. So we did not use that. Um, as Mr. Costa mentioned, they do have a site down in, uh, only Maryland, uh, which is similar and only, you know, we, we looked at, it looked at those numbers just based on where the setting is for that. It's a a community that's similar to South Kingston population-wise. I think the surrounding communities are also the same way. So we, we took a look to see what the trips were for that development. Um, and what we saw was it was about forty-two trips that were being generated from that site. Um, but we, yeah, um, you know, we want to go ahead and take a look at it because, you know, that area didn't maybe pertain to that. So we want to take a look up in this area. Uh, we also looked at other options as far as, you know, what's existing in the state as far as the total number of trips that are occurring at the three locations, which with the, with the now going to be nine locations, uh, those would be distributed throughout the state. Uh, so we took a look at that and we found that, uh, those would be, you know, somewhere around forty-three, uh, trips coming in and thirty-six exiting. And then we also took a look in regards to just the population growth in the county and the areas. And it's, it came up to be about roughly the same amount of numbers for the, uh, based on that. Um, and the last thing we took a look at in regards to the trips for the sites, and I may be getting into too much detail here right now at this hour, but, uh, we looked at it in regards to just seeing what the, the volume's going to be and came up in regards to what the trip generation's going to be for the site. And we applied those onto the future no build when we did our analysis. Um, look at our analysis, the level of service for the intersections that we looked at, and there was four that we did take a look at and investigated. We looked at Old Tower Hill Road with Kingston Road and Main Street. We looked at Pershing Avenue with Old Tower Hill Road, MacArthur Boulevard, uh, with Pershing and then MacArthur Boulevard with Kingston. And the level of services came up in regards to having no significant increases in delays. There was no, uh, drop in regards to level of service uh, for, for some of the intersections. The Pershing Avenue did have, uh, some, um, relatively significant delays, but we looked at it conservatively as far as all the traffic going to that intersection. But, you know, as I mentioned before, there is other opportunities going out there. The analysis, analysis also is not taken into account in regards to what the reconstruction is in place right now for Old Tower Hill Road, that they have a center turning lane, which will allow cars to go into the traffic stream halfway across and then merge into the, the westbound traffic at that point. Um, so they said, now, you know, with our level of service, you know, as you see in the report, you know, the level services did not go down as far level services themselves. The safety analysis, we, uh, did request crash data from the South Kingston Police. Uh, we have yet to obtain that, uh, but we'll continue to go ahead and pursue that. We could supply a supplemental, uh, information as far as that, but we did have and we included with our traffic letter from last year, uh, from a, a road safety audit. We had traffic, uh, crash data for Pershing Avenue from, uh, years back. I showed over a three-year period that at the intersection itself, there were three crashes. And then there were some at some of the other driveways in the area. So we took a look at that. We didn't see anything that was critical coming out of Pershing, uh, as far as safety goes. And then the site distance analysis was also performed. Uh, we looked at the site distance at the proposed driveway. You know, the new landscaping plan, which will be going in, uh, which will be discussed a little bit further, uh, that allow the landscape and be moved back. We are able to go ahead and get the site distance looking, uh, southbound, uh, Pershing in order to go ahead and exceed the, uh, speed limit that's occurring in that area. So we feel that there's safe access in and out of that, that main driveway. Um, so, um, the other thing that we did look at is was mentioned before is in regards to parking and the availability of that. We do have the nineteen spaces on site. And the, uh, property next door does have other spaces that will be, uh, allowed to be used for this development. Um, we did do some surveys in regards to the parking that's occurring on that site and availability over the course of three days. Uh, during the lunchtime peak hour, it came with numbers and there was in excess of, I believe, there was thirteen, uh, spaces that were available at all, uh, at those peak times, worst case. So there is additional parking that could be available in that area. And as Mr., uh, Mr. Costa mentioned in regards to the, the, uh, the turnaround, the amount and the efficiencies that they have as far as the operation, uh, as he talked about. We feel that the parking spaces are there and the way that they turn around, uh, their, their patients, once they go in to get uh, again, get into the, get into the system. They come in, they get their pickups at the turnover that will be allowed here will allow more enough parking and, uh, shouldn't have any issues with the parking that may occur here. Um, as he mentioned, there has been discussion with the South Kingston Police Department that if there is a need, we'll help with the travel. help with the traffic flow in this area. So they will be going and pursuing that. And then, as I did not mention before, as far as the capacity, and I shouldn't mention that, is one of the things they want to implement into the design is to have it a right turn only out of the site to try to minimize the amount of traffic that's going to occur on Pershing Avenue, MacArthur Boulevard. So any traffic exiting will be taking a right turn out of that site to go ahead and minimize any impacts. As a brief summary, I go quick, but I just want to go ahead and let others go ahead and, and do a brief presentation, maybe.
Thank you, Mr. Chevlin. Who is next?
Goodness, Miss Weaver, make her presentation at this point.
Good evening. Thank you for hanging in there with us this evening. My name is Catherine Weaver, and I am a landscape architect. I own the design firm of Tupelo Design Studio. I'm also an adjunct professor of landscape architecture at the University of Rhode Island. I teach planting design and design studio. There we go. I've been working with this team to provide the requested security screening around the property perimeter. The site is blessed with a very significant tall arborvitae hedge along the southern border. It contains twenty-eight arborvitae's at a height of approximately twenty to twenty-five feet. There's one oak tree growing through the middle of it, but beyond that, there are no areas where that hedge can be seen through. This protects the abiding residential property to the south of this facility. At the entrance to the property, we have worked to keep the existing vegetation in place and provide screening with a smaller arborvitae hedge, which will allow for a sightline up Pershing Avenue towards the residential neighborhood without any blockage to visibility as shown from a car view. An existing view one at the bottom of the sheet shows existing view and then proposed view. We have also proposed that the, the existing U hedge that right here, that separates the DeAngelo's facility loading area from this facility, be allowed to grow to a taller height so that there is additional interior screening in that, in that part of the parking lot for additional privacy. We have planted along the rear property line in addition to adding a security fence, a security and screening fence along the back of the property and then returning to the building, which encloses the loading area for the facility. We have maintained a native plant palette throughout, hoping to provide the necessary string, also plantings that are attractive and that will perform well in both the summertime and wintertime with with aesthetic value on top of the functional value that they provide. And I think that's it.
Great. With that, we have, go ahead, Mr. Carlson, discuss the site plan.
Members of the board, thank you very much. My name's Paul Carlson of Inside Engineering Services here, representing the applicant for, for the site. The site plan, we'll keep this very brief. The site, which contains forty-six thousand five sixty-five square feet. The, the area that is occupied for this particular site takes up about twenty, fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. The, the building itself is serviced by water, gas, electric, and sewer. What we have is, we have an onsite drainage system that is, which the site is graded to the catch basin located within the, within the site. And we have an extensive drainage system that runs through, through the site itself. As part of the project, we look to minimize or shrink down the size of the purgus area that we have for this. We did that with increasing the size of the landscape areas along the southerly edge and reducing down one of the parking spaces along Pershing Avenue. Make note that, as John had stated before, this project has fifty-one total spaces, nineteen dedicated to this specific area, all which meet the current zoning regulations. We also have a proposed screened dumpster area, a screened and secured loading area to the, to the south of the building. And as part of the drainage, what we're capturing as well is, is to introduce a underground infiltration system that will handle the rooftop drainage in order to, again, further reduce down the amount of drainage and stormwater from this particular site. We are outside of all of the overlay districts in this particular area. And one final note on this is that we do, we'll have an emergency generator located to the rear of the facility to keep this facility up and running in, in the event of any particular disasters or, or power outage in this area. That's it for today. Thank you.
Mr. Carlson, there's no actual changes to the actual physical structure of the building, correct?
That is correct. Everything is the same, inclusive of the handicap ramp that is out there.
Madam Chairperson, I'd like to have Ed Pimentel discuss portion of this application as well, if we could.
Yes, please continue.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the planning board. So not to belabor tonight, I spent a long night for everybody. Having had the experience of working before this board on several properties now in the downtown Wakefield Village area, where my real energy was placed into this was to try to capture utilizing your regulations and more importantly, your comprehensive plan, is to try to create and generate a laundry list, of which has been testified to tonight extensively by the various experts, but a laundry list of ways that maybe perhaps we could enhance this site. I know that what happens with these redevelopments is we're trying to enhance the site from a village design perspective, try to make as the best we can corrective measures. It is a dated commercial site, and that was what the intent and the goal was here. A, enhancing the landscaping. B, addressing drainage to the extent that we could, even small details. Although it's true that we're not intensifying the facility or the handicap ramp, we are going to be remodeling it to make it look more residential in character and flavor. There is, albeit, the lower neighborhood is commercially classified in the comprehensive plan. It is still, some of the homes down there are still residentially used, and we want to protect that, the integrity of that. So it was the buffering, the screening, enhancing the site. Those were the details that I paid a careful attention to, which you'll see in my report. And it was providing that laundry list and working with the design team. Small details and features, redirecting traffic away from the rear, the neighborhood below, directing it back out to the main thoroughfare, those types of details. And as Mr. Carlson testified to, enhancing and expanding on landscaped areas to try to address a little bit for the drainage, et cetera, et cetera. Those were the attention to details that I did in my report. I don't want to belabor land use consistency. It's in the comprehensive plan. I've testified to other, to other cannabis sites and sort of the same general locale. So it was really more to try to enhance the site, like we did at the job of the site. That was really the objective, my objective.
Thank you, Mr. Pimentel.
Thank you. Madam Chair, at this point, I think there are some residents who are actually on the call. If you want to go towards them, it's up to you, obviously.
Well, at this late hour, and given the fact that the board has not had the opportunity to ask questions or make comments, and I'm sure they all have their own lists that we will reserve for our next meeting, I think it would be wise to continue this to a future date, certain meeting, and then provide the opportunity for questions and comments because, because obviously, there will be quite a lengthy list. So unless board members have any burning questions, and hopefully you've written down all of your concerns, and we'll be ready the next time this comes around. Would someone like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to our February meeting?
I'll make that motion. So I'll make the motion to continue this to our February twenty-second meeting, and I'd ask the staff put it towards the front of the agenda since they waited so patiently tonight.
Excellent idea. Thank you, Joe. Motion from Joe, second from Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Before we adjourn, we need a volunteer for the next TRC, the date of which is, Jamie?
No, you were going to ask me that. Bear with us.
The ninth, February ninth.
Correct.
It might be my turn.
Sounds good. Thank you, Susan.
Susan, would you prefer nine AM or one PM?
I'm easy, whatever you like.
Okay. All right, well, we'll adjust the agenda based on what we have, and we can continue to communicate with you.
Very good. And Jamie, I expect you will get back to board members about the date for our special meeting. I know there was a doodle poll sent out, so you'll follow up with that, yes?
Yes, and I won't point fingers at anybody, but if you haven't done your doodle poll yet, please provide us with those dates.
Thank you. And you've checked with Amy as well, I'm assuming. She's looking somewhat.
I was just about to say, I don't think I saw a doodle poll.
No, I inadvertently left Amy out. My apologies.
No problem. I'll take the night off.
Amy has seven days a week in her evening schedule for us.
All right, which we appreciate. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion from Joe, a second from Josh. All those in favor say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Good night.
Have a good night.